I'm going to call the meetings in order. Time is 6:31, October 10th, 2024. All trustees are attendance, with exception of Linda Studi, which is just absent. Let's stand for lunch. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our ground in the judicial with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a few comments. Let's start with Norris Johnson. If you could stand and state your name and address, that would be great.
My name is Norris Johnson, Senior. Address is 318 Saratoga Court.
That's fine, go ahead.
Several years ago, I think all the lights went out, the streetlights, in the Elmwood area, especially my area. Then, we were told that they were fixing them. And the one at the entryway of my cul-de-sac hadn't worked in a long time. Kept seeing guys come out there for weeks and weeks, looked like they were fixing it. Then all of a sudden, they removed it. There are several, if I'm not mistaken, Marilyn as well. You can't really see. So, my concern is, we removed the light, things are dark. And then not too long ago, somebody got attacked. And the sheriff came to my house, asked if we see anybody coming through, because it was like 7 o'clock in the evening. And my concern is, we have to the light? Are we ever putting the light back? Or are we just going to keep letting it be dark? So, I called and they told me I need to come here and have a conversation about it or express it.
Okay. Do you know how long ago they took out the lights? Did you say several years ago, like 10 years?
No. I've been there since 1999. I moved in in August. It wasn't 10 years ago.
Okay.
But it wasn't that long ago.
Is that the one that...
Right over my house, right on the corner where they kept, sorry, where they kept digging and digging and digging? Now the spot?
Okay.
Yeah, right on the corner.
So Maryland and Saratoga.
Saratoga is where I live.
I mean, not Maryland.
Saratoga is what I live on. But I do know that once you start coming into the village off of Lathrop, it's dark. It's completely dark.
Yeah, can I ask you one other question? Was it a, was it one of our lights or was it like a streetlight? Like a tall streetlight or like the smaller lights?
Village of Elmwood doesn't have tall streetlights, from my understanding.
Right.
This is the entryway light.
Okay. So one of our like street lamps we're talking about, okay.
I wish it was. We energy, we would have a light.
I know, I hear you. Okay. All right. We can look into it. I don't have an answer for you today, but we can look into it and see what we can do. Are the other lights in Saratoga Court working?
The light in my yard, it works. The lighting, the other individuals' yard work.
Okay.
It is the entryway lights that are not working.
Got it.
That you have to turn. And my street, Lathrop Avenue coming off of Taylor, that's a lot of traffic. And you can't really see.
I agree. Let me see, we'll maybe have to backtrack a little bit and look at RIC Electric, who does a lot of our electrical, to see if there's something we can do. I just don't have an answer yet, but we will see what we can do as far as.
I wish I was known, we didn't know about it. I would have said something like, oh, we've got a new code.
Brian, do you know how long ago that was? Because I...
About a year.
Okay.
Yes, about a year. Roughly two.
Okay. And I can always call President, former President Rossi and Chris Jenkins, our former administrator, just to see if they have any ideas why it was removed and if there's anything we can do. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anybody have any questions? Mr. Norris Johnson, Mr. Johnson? Thank you for coming today, I appreciate it. Next up on our public comments, Brad Jake. Can you please state your name and your address?
Hi, Brad Jake, 3517 South Elmwood Drive. I noticed on the agenda, again, we have had a discussion on the water agreement. And I certainly don't have a crystal ball swing, kind of preemptively speaking here, because I don't know what's been decided or anything else. But I just wanted to mention that many of you may or may not be aware, we have a small shop on Sixth Street in downtown Mersey. We've had it for about 20 years. And what's been happening over the years is the water bills have been steadily increasing. Most recently, the water bill for January, the first quarter of this year, came, the water usage was $4.12. But our water bill was $220. So, you know, now we're pushing close to $1,000 a year for extra fees for about $15, $20 worth of water. So, my reason for speaking is that whichever way you go, be extremely careful talking to the city, because...
We have excellent representation from our attorney.
Good.
Who will be coming tonight. And it will just be, we do not have an answer from the city yet, and you'll hear more from our candidates.
This sure caught us off guard, because this wasn't in our business plan. And I'm sure it's not in your plan either. But thank you.
But thank you, Brad, for being interested. Next up on public comment, Kelly Glasson. Kelly, please state your name and your address.
I'm Kelly Glasson. I live at 3329 North Elmwood Drive. I have two things. I am on the events committee with a number of our trustees. I'm also the chairperson of the car show that we just had a number of weeks ago, and wanted to give you an update on that. That this year, we decided to do a preregistration, which we had 25 cars preregistered. Thank you to Kendall for handling all of that. We had four no-shows that preregistered. So we had a total of 79 total registries. And that brought in, it was like over $100 or $1,400 that goes back to the events committee. So this is our one fundraiser that we do once a year, the fund, all the events that we do to Zonzo and Taylor, the...
National Light Out.
National Light Out. I'm new in this, as well as our Christmas and anything that we do in the village. So it was a very good turnout. I go to car shows with my husband. You've probably seen him in the red trans am that he'll drive around the car, run the neighborhood in. And we hand out flyers and I personally talk to people and they love our car show. So I anticipate this continually to grow over the years. And I wish Jerry was here, because I would have personally thanked him for his guidance. And Far, thank you for all of your help. Ellie as well, Jen, Ken, Latira, you guys, thank you very much for all of our help.
Thanks for being the chair of that, I appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
So, and I also wanted to bring a proposal for the budget for next year. So, to the board of the Village of Elmwood Park, I would like to propose for the budget of 2025, that $300 to $400 be set aside in order to beautify the outside of the building one and the whole of Taylor complex. This will not only look great to the residents and visitors that we have to the Taylor complex, but will be attractive to those who rent our buildings and to their clients. While making building one and eventually Taylor complex beautiful, it will also be a benefit to the pollinators, which eventually will benefit all of Elmwood Park. In the spring of 2025, I would like some money to go towards annual flats for the two big pots, the concrete pots that we have outside of building one, to have color throughout the spring and summer. I would also like money to go to refresh the dirt into the concrete pots outside of building one in the fall, to plant bulbs that will come up in spring of 2026. Some of the other money will go towards buying pre-annual plants that will continually come up year after year, that can be split and spread throughout the rest of the campus. Currently, the Taylor campus does have day lilies and irises that we can split up in the spring and be replanted. We can also ask the residents of Elmwood Park, as they can, as they split up and divide their plans, to donate them to our complex and that'll save us money. So.
Thank you, I appreciate you mentioning that to us. And we'll be talking about the budget in a little bit, so, and we will be approving the budget in November, so we'll take this into consideration, Kelly, I appreciate you for that.
You're welcome.
And that concludes public comment for the night, unless there's anybody that did not sign. Okay, moving on, I'd like to make a motion to consult the agenda from both meetings of September 12th, 2024 and September 19th, 2024. Can I have a first?
I will move to make a motion to consider the agenda in the minutes from September 12th and 19th.
Second?
Second.
First by trustee Son, second by trustee Kendall. All in favor? Opposed? Guys have it, so pass. Next, we're going to move on to a visitation from Kapoor. First name, thank you.
My name's Kylie, I'm with Kapoor and Associates. Going to briefly touch on the proposed 2025 street program for the village. Right now, we have it, that will include North Elmwood, Standish Lane, MacArthur Place, the full length of Maryland Avenue, and then Wheelock Drive. We have a tentative estimate right now for a total of $951,189 and some cents. That's where we're at for all of those roads. That includes, we looked at how the base is underneath asphalt, to make sure that there's no issues with asphalt deteriorating in the future after the roads are repaved.
Is that just resurfacing or taking down to the base?
That will be in spots that the base is bad. It will, they will undercut the base and put new base down. So that is figuring in to replace it, so we're not putting fresh asphalt over poor base. And that also includes doing some drain tile work and making sure all the drainage in the area is better as well.
So that includes the manholes that are, manholes that are raised up that are going to be downed lower, so they're not bigger than the garage, driveway?
Yes, that includes all that, restoration, making everything, seeding it, restoring it, that handling all of that.
Okay, let's just remember, like, board can talk, you really can't talk right now.
I'm sorry.
Board, is there any questions you have? I think the one thing that I ask, is there anything we want to change in the streets? Do we want to continue with all of those streets as well? Do we want to change it so we're not doing so many streets at once? I know it was a three-year, well, not three-year plan, but three-step process of, over the course of three different times. I know it's come to my attention that Green Meadow Lane is in poor shape, but there are some other roads that are also in poor shape. Just so everybody in the room knows, Lathrop Avenue is not something we can fix, because it is a county highway, is up to the city, not us. So, we love to have it fixed, but that's really up to the county. It is on their docket for possibly next year, but that could also be bumped, because they only have so many, so much funding that can do. So I guess I'm just curious if the board is interested in moving any of our streets or changing anything. And I wish, we don't have the map. Can you show us the map?
Yes, I do have a few copies of it.
So you can see specifically where we are. And I'm pretty, yeah, we can share and they can share. And you guys updated it, so...
Yes, I did.
The... Purple is all done.
Yes.
And the pink section was supposed to be done right by North Elmwood and Standish Lane, but it wasn't done, so it backed up a little bit. If you're familiar with where anybody lives in this neighborhood, that is right in front of Kendall Berry's house, right where the stop sign is on North Maryland, or North Elmwood. So, we're looking at all of that section. And then, the other sections that would be done would be the third phase. I would like to know from the board, is there anything we'd like to change, take away, or wait until the third phase and move anything around? Because pretty much, it's up to us right now. Bids will be going out soon, they're not out yet. Also, when we met with Kapoor, there was, we thought it would cost so much, I don't know if you remember this, and that the price significantly changed and came down quite a bit. And there was a reason for that, and I'm not a construction, a construction as a career is, but there, the way that they raised the roads allowed it, so there was not, how do I say that?
So are you talking about how the last...
Yes.
Last phase? So last phase, it did come significantly under budget versus what the bid price was, which is the total contractor said I can complete in this amount. The reason was, we always take into account a lot of undercuts based off of soil borings, where they go bore into the asphalt, so we can see how the base condition is. Well, when they actually went out there and they took asphalt up before they were going to put new asphalt down, the base was in a lot better condition. So, in this estimate that I just read, that I have, that I can give to you as well, we include again, having to replace that base. So it's more of a fail-safe, where it's not an additional, you know?
And we just, we won't know until we do.
Yeah.
And what is it? This is for the second phase. So, we don't know yet.
So is pricing, like a worst case scenario pricing?
Yes. So this will, this includes all of those undercuts.
Okay, so... So there's no surprise?
This might be $250,000.
Yeah, that's why I'm making you look.
So I'm saying Kensington Court, I would do, you can get right there, otherwise it's going to come back and very hat on, just for that small area. Kensington Court, no, because if Lathrop does get done in the next year, right, that's going to, you know, it's going to upset brand-new asphalt, why? It just makes a lot of sense to do Kensington at the same time they're coming down Maryland.
So, the one street that I wondered about changing and taking off the table until later was Standish, because I feel like it's not in bad condition. But that's, I don't know, does anybody live on Standish? I don't drive, I don't feel like it gets as much traffic right now. But I don't want to be the bad guy and say, let's wait on parts of Standish. Tom's dying to say something, I can just see it in his face.
I'm not. I was told I can't talk.
I know. What do you guys?
Well, the only concern with taking off Standish is, is what you're saying, like, things are torn up, because they're going to be like...
I know, so that's, maybe we just keep it all connected.
Come right back to it then, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Otherwise, it's like you're driving...
That's why this conversation is not a decision.
But Kelly, do you think that makes sense for Kensington?
It does.
Because they're right there?
It does. I, if, I mean, depending on cost and things like that, I mean, it, it does, because you're right, it's going to be, they would basically, you know, the residents on Kensington Court would have to also deal with construction twice.
Right.
And having gone through that.
Yeah, that's kind of annoying.
And having gone through it, it's, I mean, it's fine.
So then we would add, but will we take anything away?
Why are you doing Wheelock?
It's in bad shape.
It is in bad shape.
It's in bad shape.
That's like, that's only part of Wheelock. It's not all of Wheelock, it's only the sidewalks.
And goes down about seven houses.
Right. But it is in bad shape.
I know what you're saying, right? But it is really...
It's got quite a bit of sidewalks.
It's, yes.
And also, you have Phase 3, you have Lathrop Avenue, you have Taylor Avenue, you've already done Phase 3. There's nothing needs to be done with Taylor, right?
I, I think it's actually in pretty good shape.
That was taken care of, I think, by the state back when Audrey was in her...
Oh, that was before I was here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a state highway. I don't know.
Really? You think so?
Meet base, so turn it to you here.
Yeah, I think it's...
Oh, so we should probably look into that.
Sure.
Can I write on this?
Yes, absolutely.
Tom, could you clarify that for me? Is Taylor Avenue a state highway? Because I know when Audrey was here, she was in charge of that being done, and I think she said that was a state highway, highway that they'll take here.
Lathrop Avenue is Highway G.
No, but Taylor Avenue.
Taylor Avenue.
The village, basically.
That's a village responsibility.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Ellie, contact Ernie, he'll know. Yeah. I think Ernie probably put it on there because of, because this is from, this is not new. The only thing they changed, this is from when we did the first phase before. The only thing that we changed is, this was supposed to be changed, was supposed to be done in Phase 1 and we stopped.
Okay. I know part of that is a county, but I don't know if that part of it...
How do you feel about the numbers of the price?
Around a million?
Mm-hmm.
That's stretching it. That's a lot. That's stretching it.
Are there any grants for those, that type of bunch that are available?
It's like every other year. So, yes, possibly, and we'll get it last year, so yes, it could possibly come back again in 2025, which is when we'd be doing it.
Because that would offset quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at the League of, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, I know they just opened up another grant, so...
That might be worth looking at to discuss what kind of grants are out there.
We did reach out to, just so you know, we reached out to Ellers, just to see, they would not recommend, Kendall and I talked about this a little bit, over 1.5 million. And this is not that, and my hope is that, I mean, but it's a hope, you don't know until you start digging. Yes. Now, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If we decide, we want to put the bids out and we want to keep it as is or change a couple of things, we can change things as the project goes and we get our bids and say, okay, wait for taking this off the table.
We can. A lot can be somewhat advised against that, because if someone bids these prices based off the quantities in the bid.
Right.
And then aggressively changes, it can sometimes cause problems, because...
I think my biggest concern is going over this price rather than keeping under it. And, yeah. I just don't want to go like way over the budget.
Well, and that being, is it possible, and you painted the buttons, sorry. If we did have a couple revisions of what we wanted to do for the streets and maybe bid out two separate projects, based on if we wanted to do it exactly as it is, or if we'd want to cut back as a concern, just so we kind of know, so we don't run into like a surprise, and just kind of come up front saying, okay, here's what we're doing, you know, it's like like buy a car, like if I do what I want, well, then I'll get it open. If I can't get the deal, well, then I'll get this instead, like something like that. Is that possible?
Yeah, we have had it in the past, where we'll do a base bid, and then we'll say, you know, X amount of streets is the base bid, and then we'll do additional, like supplemental, where saying, you know, if they choose to do this, they bid on the quantities, and then you guys are able to pick that way. That is something Greg is out of the office to speak, that's something that we could discuss with him upon his return next week. But that is something that we have done. And I'm not sure, it was not for the last phase, but just kind of, that's something I can definitely talk with him, and just to see if that's something that...
Because I don't know why this was not done here, but I know it was supposed to be done, and I don't know why it changed. And it was just this little section on the end, and they just decided, no, we're pulling it back. And I don't know if it, I don't know. I have no idea. I don't remember.
If you look at Wheelock, the price for that, I mean, you're basically going to double that to do Kensington. If you look at size with every surface.
But if it's still like a volume versus, it could still...
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Give me actual numbers. We can, we can guess, but yeah.
So you, Brian, you're saying you'd like to include all the pink and Kensington?
Well, I'm just saying, if they come all the way down Maryland, right? And I don't build the roads, but I'm just saying, if they got to come back just for that small area there, it's...
I mean, there's a case to be made for that, because, you know, $1 now, $1 in two years, you're going to be two different things. And I'm, clearly nothing ever goes down in cost. So, you know, if it's one of those, if we're going to do it, do it right kind of things, or is that going to put too much strain on the village? So that's, that's why I'm thinking, if we had different options, then at least we'd have, we, you know, have a better guess.
Put a cost estimate together for Kensington, if you would like to also see that before you decide on how you would like to bid it out or move forward.
Okay.
As well.
That's not a bad thought. When do you need to put the, what are we planning on putting the bid out again?
Right now, we have it for end of November to advertise, and then typically, we'll send it to the papers. A week later is when we post all everything and plan for...
So we can make a decision by the next board meeting, which is at the beginning of November, and then, would that work?
Yes. If there are some major changes, it might adjust it a little bit based on how available we are to get...
I know, I think that would be the one thing we'd want to look at. This, this is pink, correct? And then adding on Kensington Court. So looking at those two and then making a decision?
Yes.
In the November board meeting?
Yeah.
Which one we want to go with?
Okay. I can get, I will write a note to get Kensington estimate, and then, and in worst case, it may adjust the bid by a couple of weeks. But right now, we have a board, or the December for the bid opening. So I'm talking about pushing back maybe a couple of weeks that way.
Okay. What does everybody think?
I like seeing options. I've been, I've spent two hours shopping on Amazon for something for $20. So, I, you know, it's a lot of money, so I think having all the options kind of...
Okay.
I don't like, I don't like money surprises.
So just to, so I want everybody to think between now and the next board meeting. And then, if you could, like, we'll keep this one, and then just add on Kensington.
Okay.
And then we will make a decision at the next board meeting. We don't need her to come back in November, do we? If you could just get the numbers and...
Yeah, absolutely. I should be able to get that by next week.
Okay.
Week after I've the latest.
That'd be great. Okay. I'm not really not supposed to take questions, because public comment's over. What do you need, sir?
So, in the past, whenever there's been a revision of our roads, you know, large contrast, there's always been a public meeting, so that the village people can come and listen to what's happening?
Yes.
Is that still going to take place?
Yes, Laura, can you help me with that? We've had a public meeting before, when there's been a decision on the board. We should probably set that for a pre-meet. Okay.
So at that point in time, then I can stand up and give you my pitches about the last road project and all of the faults that was done?
Sure. Or you can also email me and I will bring it to the board myself.
I think you've heard some of them already.
So, that is also in our comment for tonight. There is something that's going to be done, but it's later in the agenda.
I also didn't hear anything about the power lines for the streetlights. I know that in the past, when they dug up all the stuff around our neighborhood, they ran into those power lines and saw the reaches that were done in the past and all the quick fixes. And I understand it's going to cost tons and tons of money. But I have yet to hear a proposal, nor have I actually heard of anybody coming in and doing any research to see...
Well, that's not unheard, that's on the board. I don't, I don't, that, that's, that's a different issue, like, we're not, we're working on the roads.
This is part of the road project.
Well, the lights are a different issue than the roads.
But in order to justify...
The lights, the lines run under the pipes where the roads are, which is why we're having a hard time fixing them, because all of the power lines run underneath the sewer. And it really...
I understand that.
But really, we're not having a public comment right now, so you can email us or talk to us, but really, we cannot get into a conversation, and this is really not...
Thank you for inviting me.
In her, in her turn. Am I right? That, that is not, the lights are not, it's a totally separate issue.
Yeah, if we were to address the lights throughout the village, that would be $900,000. So that's something that maybe even the board has to look at and say, okay, we've got a million dollars, do we put it at the, on the roads?
I understand that. But if you're going to do the roads, why circumvent and not do the power lines?
Because it'll cost us another $900,000.
I understand that.
But this is not public comment, and I have to ask you to stop talking.
Yes, my love.
Thank you. Excuse me, that is inappropriate.
Thank you very much.
I do not appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Moving on. Did you have anything else you would like to share? And is that okay that we can have this?
Yeah, you guys can keep all of that, and if we need any additional copies, I can send them to you tomorrow as well.
Okay, great. We will be in touch, we'll look for the new, the new proposal for improvements, including Kensington Court, and then in November, when we have our next board meeting, we will make a decision as to which route we're going to go, and then we'll go from there.
And I'll talk to Greg next week and follow up with you guys afterwards.
Um, board, does anybody else have anything that you want to ask before? Anything else? Anything else? Okay, great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming, and if you decide to sneak out. Okay, moving on. The sheriff is not, not here, but you did receive a sheriff's report in your email, so please take a look. I did ask Kendall, there's one thing I've noticed with the sheriff's report, they're no longer giving us, they give us a report, but they don't give us any of the addresses or anything listed that gives the detail, so I asked her if, that Leteria probably should look into that, I'm assuming. One of you, okay, look into the sheriff's report. My notes for this evening, I just wanted to share just two things, the Nile, so on Oak Tree Lane, there have been some concerns with the sewers because they were lower and they were not put in correctly. Actually, Kapoor came out and looked at it a few months ago, we had to get two bids, we got one from Reisman and one from the person we're going with, and I cannot remember their name, but they need to be fixed, they were not done properly. So they are coming out, we have approved for that to happen, and it came in just over a thousand dollars, but I do believe it definitely needs to be fixed. And it's something that came back from before, when I was president, before my term, when I was still trustee. So that's being taken care of. We're working with, I'm working with Terry and hopefully Leteria, still looking into Building Five and the kitchen and finding that out. We have not gotten enough pricing yet to make a decision, so that's just still, you know, in the works. I just gave Terry some, some measurements and things, and I really want him to kind of help me take on that project, because I just feel like, I don't know. And I, I've done a kitchen, I've done a kitchen twice now, and I just want to make sure all the measurements are right, I don't want to get cabinets that don't fit. And I also want to see the pricing and talk to Building Five about helping us with possibly pitching in a little bit there. Moving on to trustee Kendall, do you have anything to report?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Stein?
I've known him before.
Trustee Studi is absent, and I appreciate Kelly Glasson coming in to talk about the car show, because that's probably what they would talk about. Trustee Winnick?
No.
Administrator Shaw, you had a list today, would you like to share?
Yes. See what you can tell us. I guess I have a question, with the grates being put in incorrectly on Oak Tree, what does asphalt contracting have to say about that?
It was, it took too long, there's nothing they can do, we looked into that. We tried, and it was honestly approved by our administration that there was nothing like, it's like they said, it was fine, and it wasn't fine, if you understand, and they should never have said it was fine, the time has gone too long. I will tell you that Greg, Greg, or on Greg from before came out, because there was a lot of mesh left behind, which also was a problem, and he came and removed all of the mesh from the grates. I will double check and make sure that they were, because there is one, I think, across the street from you, Laura, in. Yes, that in front of somebody's house that said they still had mesh in there, so we will see if that can be removed. I actually already told him about that, but he did come out himself and remove like seven different parts, seven different grates, seven different sewers had mesh still in them, and you could just tell, the leaves just pile up, and it's like, come on. So that should have been done, those are things that we need to make sure as a village that that is taken care of when the roads are done. Okay, go ahead, Leteria.
Alrighty, so a lot of things happened here in the village. We're looking at getting flash and stop signs over on Lake Look and Taylor at the intersections, so that'd be four flash and stop signs. I did speak with someone today, and it's looking like it'd be about $1,500 for the stop sign.
For stop signs?
Yes, yep. It was recommended not to get the flash and stop signs, because I was told that it really wouldn't stop the accidents, but it's recommended that we get the sign that says, slow down, stop this ahead. So, it's just the main apartment area.
So one thing I've noticed, driving through there, is that it is also dark, as Mr. and that is a concern. Also, Laura brought up a really good point just a couple of weeks ago, that we really should let the resident know on that corner if we do put in flash and stop signs. Now, she does have our provider right in front of her house that I don't think it will distract, but if we did decide to go that route, it might not be a bad thing to talk to her first. And nobody else, I don't think it would bother anybody else. That's a lot of money.
Yes, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, so we can kind of plan and see if we want to go forward with those stop signs, or if we want to just implement the signs that say, go stop ahead, to kind of give people a heads up when they're driving.
Are those the solar powered flashing?
Yes, so they do have a solar option, but the minimum would be like 1,500 per stop sign.
Can we just have one? Just kidding, I don't know, that's, that's one of those things, are there any grants out there? I mean, that might be a good thing to look into, just to see if that's, I feel like the city should help us with this, because it is.
But the thing is, every time, but nobody knows, because every time there's an accident, you turn on the scanner, first thing you hear is, is this Resene, is this Mount Pleasant, whose responsibility, and it's like a big ordeal to send Mount Pleasant PD or a sheriff there for the accident, but it's going to be a weirdly thing though with accidents there.
Yeah, alright.
I don't think signs are going to help.
No.
You put a sign saying, stop ahead, I don't, people don't even know.
Taylor too, and I think a lot of people will be confused, because all of a sudden they come around in that supposed line where you stop is so far ahead, like you mentioned earlier, it's so dark, but then you got people coming down, Lake Look doing 70, you got people down, Taylor doing 70. You know, it's just, and you've got people following each other through, like, you know, they don't stop, it's.
Flashing, I think it's much more.
Excuse me, but that was 1,500 dollars for the flashing though?
Just one, for just one.
The solar one?
Just one.
You could just put one right in the middle and confuse everybody.
Give them something to get.
Might slow down, right?
There's no sort of like light that goes on the stop sign, right? They don't ever have lights that are, so the stop signs are just lit up without flashing. That's the other thing I wonder, because I feel like it's really just hard to see the stop signs to begin with. And maybe if you just lit them up, I don't know, I'm just, I'm wondering, maybe it's not flashing, but it's just a lit up sign, then maybe they would see them. I just feel like it's very dark on that corner, and I really do think we need to figure out whose responsibility it is, because I don't think it just falls on us, especially if you're saying.
Oh, yeah, they know.
We've got all three areas, Mount Pleasant, Resene, or the county and Elwood Park, and we're apparently the only ones that are concerned. Who else is concerned about this? Like, we got to get, okay, keep going, because we've got lots on the agenda.
Yeah, so the nice goal was sign unlimited, so they're completing with all the buildings with the windows, and they're planning to start this building in November, and planning to put the doors on on the 28th of this month. And there was a little issue with the doors, but today it was confirmed that they are not refundable, or we can exchange Americans, so we're going to definitely go with the doors we have already. It is possible to still keep the storm doors that we have already, and just keep it that way with the new doors.
We do think it would be good to keep the doors, just because if, like, you think about the spot, they want to leave their door open, they now cannot, because there's no screen, the church has, Building Five has no screens, so they can never leave their door open, unless we put screens back on them. So I think we're going to try and save the screens, and then maybe down the road, you can replace them, but at the moment, I think we just leave as it's.
I'm just thinking that those doors are meant not to have storm doors, and I just think putting the old storm doors on there, kind of like, I don't think it'd be very nice looking, and if people want to reopen the windows, we've got all brand new windows, but without the screens. I just kind of question that.
Then, we don't really, the doors are so, they just have one window, I don't, we didn't like the looks of them, compared to the doors that we have now, that have three windows, doesn't, a lot of light, a lot of light in? That was the other concern, and I just, I don't know. I don't know, that was just a thought.
Yeah, so we can make changes with it, he said we could either get new storm doors altogether, or we can just stick with the ones we have, and they will have to kind of gain to look at them.
I guess we can.
But we definitely can keep those doors.
Yeah, pricing, yes, the new doors, yep.
And then I did speak with him too, and I kind of let him know about the lock situations. We're going to probably put the doors on, but we're going to just keep the regular lock right now, because the estimate was way too high for the pad box. So we're going to just stick with what we have right now, and give the regular keys until we find another option.
Right.
To get those locks.
Did he, did Tim indicate why he's speaking around with the contract?
Yeah, Horne, why are they changing, do you kind of surround on that?
Okay. He could go in there, raise, raise a little, okay, great, that'd be great, yeah, I'm going to go in there.
Yeah, I don't know, because he said, what is going on with the doors, I said, Laura's going to be stopping and talking to you about it, and as you all were feeling recently, so that'd be great.
Yeah.
That was great, Laura.
Yeah, it was a really big difference. And then I did speak with BMB Paintings, and we approved for them to go ahead and paint and put the drywall and everything. I'm today I met with Brandon at BMB, and so it wasn't like solidified and confirmed that he was actually going to be taking care of the project, but he is happy to still work on it, we already approved it. Upon looking at everything, he said it would go down, actually, because the drywall's already in, they ordered for drywall, painting, a trim, and a lot of different things like that, that was already taken care of, and then Building Five, they think it's already, so Building Five's like taken care of, and, you know.
Different cells.
And it looks great, so I know that the pastor is actually a contractor as well, so maybe in the future we can work with him on projects. We have someone right here on this campus with us that works for most.
And he's a gutter person, so if we need new gutters ever in the building, we could contract with him if we want to.
Maybe somebody we can look at too with those kitchen cabinets.
Well, he cannot do that, he's, he's the one who wants a kitchen cabinets, but he can't do it. I know, I was hoping. He did, that's just not in his wheelhouse, gutters are in the wheelhouse, not cabinets. I looked, I asked.
When you said contractor.
Yeah, no, not, not, not an all, all trade, okay, contractor.
So with BMB Painting, I will have a new quote that's updated, he's going to email it over to me, so I'll take a look at that and get that to everyone. Back to the swimming grates, Oak Tree Lane, we're thinking that's going to be done like next month now, it's already approved, we're ready to go, so we just decided to finally take care of that. Currently, we are discussing a lease for building to be with the insurance company.
And well, let's just skip that, Kendall's going to be on our agenda.
So that is on the agenda, we'll talk about signage, they really want some signage. We do have another meeting for the swimming water agreement coming up next week, so we'll kind of get some more answers, and today we'll be kind of discussing that as well, so then we'll follow up on that. And then currently, we are due to renew our insurance, that's for January 2025. We made a lot of improvements to the complex, so we have infinist, all the windows, and then this is from kind of looking at a good C-bowl, and things like that, so that, they made some changes there, and also we got the new lift machine too, so there's going to be a few adjustments, hopefully it doesn't change too much.
Oh, and one thing you asked me to talk about that I didn't talk about. Ray Anderson, Kendall, maybe you want to talk about Ray Anderson, and when did we get to you? Is that okay? Okay, keep going.
Alrighty, and then today when we talk about the snow removal contracts, we did get two bids in, so that's exciting, then we have another person interested, a lot of people were like fit for like commercial properties and water services, I spoke with contractors there, and they were more interested in taking care of like the campus, not the roads, so things like that prevented them from submitting for the bid, so we do have two people that are not going for that. And then upcoming events, we will be doing the turkey trap for sure on Thanksgiving, so we hope to see everyone there. And then I'm still working on trunk retreat, if I don't have a good number of people who want to attend, then we'll just do it next year. But hopefully we can still do it, I think it's probably a good way to get more involved, that's in the community.
Excellent, thank you.
Could I have a question with that BMB painting? They, what was their estimate originally, 7,200, was that good? And they said they were going to have some adjustments to that?
Yes, smaller.
Because drywall's all done, and drywall and taping and mudding and all of that is on there, and it's, it's no longer, so excited when we should get that.
Yeah, they also had that they were going to paint the doors, like the doors we're putting on, but when he looked at the door, he said, that's the weight already, that doesn't need to be, that's taken off as well, he's like, this is a big difference, so it's going to go down significantly. And then the fight's like taken care of, but I mean, we can send them to do, you know.
Do you need to?
But, yeah, so I'm kind of excited that that went down.
Alright, treasurer's report, I just put something on your plate.
I'll just read the emails, since that's what we pay them to do. Ray Anderson is our village assessor, he sent to me an email and said that so far this year, the village has four sales that close, and the assessment to sales ratio is 83%. There are currently four more houses in the village listed for sale, and it looks like our assessment ratio for 2024 will probably be around 80%. So if a reassessment is not done for 2025, we will be out of compliance for that year. I would recommend doing a revaluation for 2025, it's better to do it now than wait and have larger increases.
And his, and there was a renewal there for him?
Correct.
Okay, and he just wanted to make everybody aware, we do need a village assessor, and no increases on his fees.
It's a thousand dollar increase from two years ago when we did it last year?
It's about 10,000.
No, it's 9,000, it was 8,000 last time.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'm waiting to see if anybody wants to say anything. When did we have the last assessment, was it last?
Last year.
I think that, you know, if they're going to do an assessment in 2025, just to keep us in compliance, that's something we have to do.
Correct.
Because it's kind of almost state mandated.
I just want to make sure everybody was aware.
Right, and then, like Ray said too, if you don't do it, you're going to be in trouble with the state, but you would also be in trouble with, you know, the homeowners when capital sells significantly after that. So I think we should do it, just making sure everybody.
So do we, so it's generally, I feel like it's generally bent every other year anyway, so it's not, so it's like the odd years.
Yes, last year we did.
Last year.
Yeah, last year, so we'll do it again in 2025.
There's a big jump between 2020 and 2025, there's a, we saw a very big change.
Yeah.
Hopefully, in the future, we'll see that slow down a little bit.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then that increase, that will happen at that point too, that will help with the lateral break too, that if the village wants to borrow more, that will help in the future.
Okay, yeah, anything else, Kendall, from the treasurer's report, that you want to share?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
That was a very big hesitation, okay, great. Alright, moving on to old business, discussion of possible approval of snow removal contract for 2024. So, as Leteria stated, we still have asphalt contractors, it's still, their bid is still open, and then we have this full blown Smith that put it through a bid, which we, I don't know anything about, but we're looking at two different options. Laura, I just want to point out, Laura did a great job of reaching out to a lot of people, and then Leteria did a great job of following up with all of those people to see if they were going to put through a bid, and on Monday, when she talked to me, she said, I'm just not getting any other bids, I haven't gotten anything. And I was, at first I thought it closed on Monday, and she said, no, we've got until Thursday, I said, call every single person and just see if anybody is planning on putting forth a bid. And this is the only one we got, we tried really hard.
In Full Bone Smith?
She tried, they both tried really hard, so I really, really. Yeah, we had, we were in the talk, she had, Laura made meetings for Leteria, Leteria had meetings with people, it just, this is what we got. We did reach out to our previous, the Mike, who sold all his equipment and no longer does it, I was really bummed about that, because he was really good, but this is what we can work with, so we've got to make a decision tonight, we have to make a decision tonight, not, not make a decision.
And I know the last thing we talked about, we only did a one-year contract, but it sounds like we can't do that, and honestly, if you've been contacting everybody on the planet, and this is what we got, I, I mean.
But I think one thing that will qualify that is that because it's so late in the season, a lot of contractors are filled up. And so, in the future, if I'm on the board or not, please remember, start in April or May, start calling these contractors, because they get filled up so quickly, and then they just can't take on any other clients.
Well, I don't even know if that was it, I feel like it was just they were not interested in us. I don't know, wave the words out up on the street, Laura, they don't like us out here. That's true, so what do you think, look at both bids? I know where you two are, you already showed me.
And then Full Bone Smith, actually, they actually contracted with North Bay, so I mean, that's a good, and so they serviced them.
Which is nice, North Bay, which is the same size as us.
Yeah.
I like that, do they stake it all? Did they tell you, or you don't, they don't stake it all?
They have like a smaller company, actually, the, it's like a two-person team pretty much, that has a wife.
Well, Mike before was one person.
Pretty much.
He's all on his own. I'm just trying to compare, like, okay, the order is a little bit different, but it's, that's, that's, summer.
Brian, why are you so adamant with this one, just tell me?
Because of the disaster of the salt last year. And. It was, I mean, we've seen what they've done, and why not try somebody different, save it a little bit of money?
I remember, so, so when it was, when the salt was, was applied, do we, do we remember how much like each application of salt was? I feel like it was more than a hundred fifty dollars.
Oh my gosh.
For each time they dumped it. So if it's, if they're saying a per application per truck, I don't know if that means like per snowfall, or if that means, because I'm just trying to, it's like, and, and.
And salting here.
Where, where are they located? Where are these, where are they coming from?
They're near North Bay, so I think maybe Union Road, actually.
Well, but North Bay's all the way.
It's not on our side. Did you talk with the administrator out of North Bay? Get their opinion on?
Yeah, she said it'd be wonderful. There was just.
I would trust her. Dory, I used to work with her.
Yep, she referred me. I would just, I called her and just asked her, like, who'd you work with?
And she's pretty on top of things. She's like a Laura.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing there.
I'm not kidding. She is, she's like, she has got all her ducks in a row, like, I would trust Dory. I worked with her at Prairie, she was great. And she, like, if she's saying this was a good company, I've just seen what asphalt can do, and I do feel like we did have, they tear up a lot of our roads, and North Bay also doesn't have sidewalks. If people out there aren't complaining, that might be helpful.
You know, if they know they're going there, they're coming here, unlike when they were out here, like, three inches of slosh.
Right, because.
And sixty degrees the next day, and we don't have to worry about calling them and saying, "Hey, here's your weather report. We don't need you here. Coming from Union Grove."
And even if it doesn't matter calling, just calling one or two people as opposed to, okay, we're gonna call down. They might send the word on, send a list first, who knows?
Right.
Who knows?
And the other thing I thought was interesting is asphalt has a holiday rate, where it's, Blone is saying something about that.
The other thing, so I'm looking at this, and it's, I have two, number two on the full blown is a plow truck with a salt, they're a hundred dollars an hour. And then, if you look at asphalt contractors, a plow with a salt, they're a hundred and forty-four.
Hundred and forty-eight. Well, twenty-five, yeah.
Or twenty-five, twenty-seven, wow. Well, it, it almost seems.
It's fifty bucks.
It's a lot more, yeah.
Skid loaders.
And that's generally, I'm thinking, more or less, all they really do. Because I'm looking at these other things, I don't recall seeing, like, skid overs and stuff like that out there, were there?
The only time I've ever seen anything other than just a plow or a truck.
It's a plow.
Is when we had like the Blizzard, and they had to come in with like headgear here after that, but that was.
Yeah, you could be right, you could be right.
That's the only time I've ever seen anything besides like a plow or a truck.
I, I, well.
Well, and, and to go on the, you know, the point of, you know, if we were to look earlier in the year next year, this is a one-year contract. This is a two-year contract. So we do, maybe we do just give it a.
Yeah.
Oral, and then.
Oh, is this a one-year contract with them, or we don't know yet?
I was looking at the sweet year, because that's what we were working on. For that.
For the.
Did you do it?
No, I would say without, as a two-year, we stick with two-year, we don't change it for them. And they have it in their bid as a two-year, yeah, so it would be.
Oh, so it's, but it's the same price for the two?
They just didn't, yeah, they didn't give us a price list for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, that's.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
Got to make sure, though, you know, that we get the current.
That's.
Price list. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes.
Yeah. Or if it's like that, you know, can we reserve it, whatever it is.
I'm assuming the bulk of our spending on that is the salt and the truck.
Yeah.
And is there a way to compare the salt part?
I mean, it's.
It says bulk or bulk, so I, I'm just not sure. It says bulk salt, a hundred and fifty per application.
I think you could look back at the bills.
Yeah.
And they'll tell you what the salt is, just, the salt's always by far the most expensive part that you always, always.
Okay.
So I think that's a pretty good deal right there.
You're saying a hundred fifty per application.
Per application.
I mean.
Oh.
All village. They almost seem to.
That's why I'm like. Yeah, I think. And she's still in business again. I, she does say it's not removal for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six winter season. Are these, are the same prices? So I, it shouldn't change.
Okay. Well, then, what I would compare in price, and then I can look at both years to compare.
Several years of work, experience working with villages in large city municipalities. We specialize in snow removal, erosion control, large-scale melting, melt, old chimney seating. And it's a woman-owned, small-owned business. A woman-owned.
They have a husband.
She was, but her husband passed away. And she does have a team. I think this is, I, let's give it a try. I, I really like the fact that North Bay uses them, too. Okay, so can we move to a approval? Can I have someone approve the snow removal contract for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-six seasons?
I move to have full blown Smith for snow removal for the Village of Elmore Park for the seasons of twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven.
And a second?
Second.
First by Rude, second by Johnson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, surpassed. And Lateria, if you could give them a call, and also call back asphalt and tell them we need to go a different route. That would be great, preferably by tomorrow. Okay, new business, we would like to have a discussion with our village attorney regarding the sewer and water agreement with the city. I've asked Mark Kingston to come in today. Mark, if you wanna come forward, that would be really helpful. We want, one thing I did ask Mark to explain, Mark.
Where would I come forward?
Just come closer, so I can see you. Front of the room. You can sit, you can sit right here if you want.
See, I dressed up.
Yes, you're okay. But I, I do want everybody to understand, and Mark, maybe you can explain it. It is a difference in a sewer agreement and a water agreement. There's two different things. But we have only seen the sewer, we have yet to see the water.
Correct, can I get my props?
Yes, go ahead. Who has props? My favorite attorney in Oliver City, and I know a lot of them, because I used to work with them a lot of times. You guys are doing great, thanks. We know this is a long way.
Okay. As to that point, this is kind of unbelievable, I guess, but Attorney Letney, the city attorney, they did a open records request.
Sorry, can you talk up a little bit louder?
Sure, they did an open records, the city did an open records request of the village asking for any water agreements between the city of Racine and the village. And apparently, they couldn't find one that is currently in place, but obviously, they're providing water service. And the meeting, I'll get to that in more detail, but the meeting Lateria and I went to a few weeks ago, they kind of just threw the water situation out for the first time, and even then, even then, Attorney Letney was very nonchalant about it, like, oh, the mayor, the mayor wants us to maybe address, maybe address the, the water situation. So Lateria was, he was pretty vague and ambiguous about it. And then he wouldn't go into detail why or give us any specifics, so that's where we're at on that. I mean, they haven't notified the village of, that they're going to terminate the water service, and I don't believe they can. Public Service Commission wouldn't like that as well, and the residents wouldn't like it, obviously, but I don't think they can do that. But I don't know what leverage they would have to make the village sign some sort of onerous agreement, because the rates are regulated, the current rates for Elmwood Park are all in line with the other municipalities. So I'm not sure what leverage they have, but in any event, normally, when you, you know, wanna change a particular relationship or an arrangement, you'll broach that with the other party and, and make suggestions or, or give notice of, I mean, I don't even know, like I said, they couldn't find an agreement, so there's, I'm not sure what there would be, you know, legally to terminate, but. So anyway, that's where we're at on that, on the water situation. I, I did in a recent letter to the city attorney, I did basically broach that with him, and basically said, hey, if you, you know, what's your position on this? We need some clarity. And that was a couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned that there was a meeting tonight, so we'd like some guidance on that. And, and then I followed up, and gladly, and then earlier, and then today. Part of it is to just basically, let's say, paper trail, but, you know, there's, there's no need for, he, he basically replied last week that, apologized for not getting back, but we'll hear from him at some point in the future. So I still have it, and so I'll get to the sewer agreement situation. But to my way of thinking, if you've got a specific, I mean, this is a very important issue, obviously, to all of you. I used to live in Elmwood Park as well, so I, I mean, I, I obviously like the community and, and and nobody likes to, you know, have questions about the sewer and the water situation. So anyway, you know, regarding that, to my way of thinking, it's like, here, you know, this isn't, this is very important. But, you know, intellectually, it's not necessarily, well, I, I shouldn't say that, because, you know, some of this is very technical. I'm not a hydrologist, or certainly not a sewer expert, thankfully. But there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of technical stuff that's going on in these situations. But the bottom line is, you know, why can't you just come out and say, "This is what we suggest." So backing up, earlier this year, he had sent a notice basically to the village saying, "We've got a fifty-year sewer agreement that's coming up for expiration, and it allows us to terminate it, allows either party to terminate it." So that was kind of a, not misleading, but regardless, it would have terminated in this January coming up. And, I mean, that sounds bad, but the reality is, backing up here, this is the agreement. It was prepared on something called a typewriter fifty years ago. And it basically says that it can be terminated, but there's some language in here that, of course, it's ambiguous, but says, "Either party has the right to terminate upon one year's notice. However, no party shall be privileged to exercise such right of termination without equal sewer service being assured to the area seeking to terminate its contractual rights and obligations." In other words, it's a little bit vague, but I read this as, you know, common sense, that if, if this gets terminated and stops, then the city can't pull the rug out from underneath, underneath you all. The Public Service Commission regulates the water situation, but it doesn't oversee the sanitary sewer situation. So kind of a, I wouldn't say a theme, but a situation with these agreements is this doesn't occur every day, and it's not a common occurrence. And so some of these questions aren't necessarily clear-cut. So anyway, they terminated the agreement, even though it would have terminated fifty years, which is coming up anyway. And then the question becomes, well, what can they do, and then what can the village do? And so, you know, they, I don't think they can just pull the rug out and say, "Oh, we're not gonna provide sewer service anymore to you." But by the same token, that brings up the question, well, then, can the, can the village just say, "Oh, we don't wanna sign another agreement? Just keep providing us service, and we'll keep paying for it." And obviously, that's a more equitable situation, and I think the village would have more leverage in that, that situation. So anyway, after that, Lateria got an email from the then administrator of the city of Racine, who basically said, "Oh, we're not, you know, we're not cutting off service," she, I'm kind of paraphrasing. "We just wanna negotiate an old agreement that's coming to an end." So, I mean, giving us the impression that, you know, they, they don't really wanna change things up, et cetera. But with that said, when, when we met with them.
Now, that was a former administrator, right?
Correct.
That was in January. Now, we have a new administrator, who, when I talked to him at the RCA ICC meeting, said, "Well, we want Village of Elmwood Park to have their own infrastructure." And I, he's not from Racine, and I said, "Have you come to the Village of Elmwood Park? Do you realize we have two hundred and five homes, we are four hundred people? We don't have any place to put."
Yeah.
So that, I don't think he knew really what he was talking about, just, it was, I think he was kind of like taken aback that I was talking to him, but I don't know.
Well.
And he had not come forward with any sort of suggestion.
Well, that concerned me when he says stuff like that, because first of all, I think that would be cost prohibitive.
I think it was very.
I mean, I don't, you know.
I just said, yeah, we need to be talking, and that's when I emailed you that, that evening, after, that was in, at the end of August. And said, "Okay, here's all our things, and this is what's going on, and I just don't know," and then you guys had the meeting with them.
Right.
And I just, I don't, I want an answer, and it's been since January, and it is now October, and we have no answer.
Right.
And it's frustrating. I do also wanna bring up, because we do have, Tom Mills, who was in the audience today, did bring up, and I, I just want you to speak to the room, people were thinking about pulling, putting together something to go door to door. And you would advise probably not to do that at the moment, to, to talk to residents, because we're still in talks of what to do, there's nothing has been said. Do you remember me talking to you about this?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no, I mean, the First Amendment allows that, obviously, and there's no prohibition against doing something like that. You know, attorneys tell, I don't do criminal law, but they tell criminal defendants not to talk to anybody, especially law enforcement about something. There's no prohibition against people going door to door and talking about it, and.
I just don't know if signatures could even help us in this case.
Well, backing up a little bit here. Recently, I mean, I, I was leaving the meeting that Lateria and I were at, thinking, okay, you know, they're gonna come up with something in specific. But as time goes on, I'm thinking, you know, they, they have never come out and said, "No, you're gonna be on your own, get new infrastructure."
That's the only time I heard that.
And so now.
And I just don't think.
But it concerns me now that they're, that's my, to my suggestion at the end, but it's concerned me that they're not.
Coming forth.
Coming forth.
And North Bay is in the same situation we are, and they are also not coming forth with North Bay.
I've talked to the North Bay lawyer, and he's ostensibly a, a water law expert. They, the prior North Bay attorney, village attorney had done some work for the city, so they got this attorney from Madison. I've talked to him. He concurs with me that they really can't just pull the rug out. But when I recently just contacted him to see what, to share notes, so to speak, well, I did talk to him right after our meeting with the city. And he was, he, he didn't have any specific, they were, they were also vague and ambiguous with them, although they had more of a concern with them about water runoff and that sort of thing, and how it was combining with the sewer system, et cetera. But there again, they never came out and said, "This is what we want in terms of an agreement, or this is, you know, these are our concerns if they have any." It's my way of thinking, you know, it's, I can't imagine that the status quo would, would be costing the city any more than it, you know, already. You know, the, the city isn't losing money by providing a sewer system to Elmwood Park. And I'm wondering, you know, I mean, what's, what's, what are they hiding here in terms of like, you know, what's their.
Is there a big reveal? Is there gonna be a big reveal in that?
So, so if I'm, if I'm hearing this right.
So frustrating.
Are, the contract we have, the contract we have with, whether, whether that is, is done in January, and they're being kind of whole-hum, nonchalant, are they? My personal conclusion, I don't know if this is. My personal conclusion, I don't know if this is anywhere near it, is that they're, like, buying time, so they have to force our hand in January.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we'll get this, boom, you've got 30 days to decide, and you have to do this otherwise, which is why we're trying to force them.
And that's, you know, at the time of the meeting, I was still optimistic, but as time, a couple of weeks have gone by, especially the past few days, now, I'm agreeing with that. I think they're just kind of sandbagging us. And so, then I think about the scenarios, what if they just, what if they did say, "Oh, we're not going to provide this, and you have to, you have to get your own infrastructure"? I mean, that would just be cost prohibitive. Frankly, we have to file a lawsuit to keep them from doing that.
I did, Latira and I had a Zoom call with Brenna Newbauer, who represents us right now at the state level, and I did bring it up, just to say, is there anybody at the state level that can help us? And she wants us to keep her in the loop. She said, "I don't know necessarily that anyone at the state level would want to get involved." I did get involved with Mount Pleasant, that was kind of not great. But, I would wonder if there's anybody at the state level that would help us come to some sort of... And so, we've got Greta we can talk to.
Sure.
And she said she'd be more...
I know I can't talk, but I got a question for the attorney.
Yes, go ahead, you can ask the question.
I understand, you read through this, and we've always talked about having this sewer agreement. When the village was formed, I was just about yank high to a grasshopper. And I got into the village over 30-some years ago, onto the board. And they were in Anax, where I live now, part of Number 7, because that was swamp land. And they said that they had a water, wastewater agreement, and they refused to sign any water agreement, because the village is landlocked, had so many buildable lots in the village. We set, they set a price that we would have to pay to maintain the water service. That's why we have always paid the increase for water supply for every residential household and village property that was owned by the city, owned by the nuns at the time, the lady that run the Taylor home. They paid all of the increases. We have paid all of the increases since the village has bought this property and done the improvements. We've paid for the infrastructure improvements to make this building and facilities what it is today. We have paid the current rates, and not once was those ever brought up as far as an increase, because we paid the going rate. The 50-year agreement that you're talking about, that has to be done, would be the only enforceable, but they can't take the sewers away, because they're tied in with Mount Pleasant new structures, as far as the main runs. I've spent many hours and days looking at the structures and talked to the people that run the water department. They can't find any agreement. They found what you have, a waste, but not a supply.
Correct.
And by the supply, if we are paying the going rates, the only thing that's being done is a political ploy to get North Bay and the Village of Elmwood to say, "Okay, your sewer agreement's done, so our whole water agreement", they want to re-phase it and have the water and the sewer combined on a new contract.
With an increase.
Yeah, with, with the going increase rate. And that's why, because the new increase rate is going to be a sizable one, because they have to take care of all of the lead pipes, and I know they just got over a million dollars grant for taking care of the rest of the lead pipes throughout the city.
Right.
But, they're going to be short, because some of the funds disappeared and went to some other account. Strange how that works, but I'm telling you, they're looking for who else they can gather money from.
I guess I want to know if the board has any questions? Because I talked, Latira and I have talked to Mark here and there, correspondent over email. But, I really brought Mark here today, Steve, I wanted everybody to be in the know as to what was happening, and make sure you understand that this has been going on since January. I do have a timeline of the times that we've tried, we have a paper trail.
Yeah, there's just one other thing I wanted to add. So, what they were ostensibly floating out there, but as I've thought about it, I think that is the, now I think that that is possibly the scenario. They're going to hopefully wait and wait and wait, and then they're going to say, "Oh, well, you know, the agreement is terminated, and that means terminated", and they'll try to have this, you know, scare us into this Armageddon scenario. And really, they, they don't want that, they don't really want the negative publicity over that and the, just the mess that that'll cause. But, they're doing it, like Tom said, they're doing it, they'll be doing it to try to get, you know, some sort of leverage to scare the village into doing something that, you know, that wouldn't be in the village's best interest, but in the city's best interest. And I'm, you know, I understand the, it's not a bad thing to go door-to-door, or I guess let the city know, but I'm also telling you that I'm, my plan is, and of course, Latira and Ally would review the letter first, but I need to send them a letter, basically, saying, "I did this a few weeks ago, but now I'm more convinced that they're just, I wouldn't say screwing around, but that's their motive, they want to just sit back, hope we do nothing." And I'm going to tell them the letter that, you know, this, you need to confirm that you're not going to do that. You need to confirm that you're acting in good faith, and you're not going to, you know, I'm going to tell them, there's a suspicion that you're just going to wait, and then you're going to pull the plug, and then tell the village that they owe an ass, that they're going to have to pay an astronomical amount to replace infrastructure or whatever they're doing. And so, they had also, I guess, previously, Mr. Haas, who had been in charge of the wastewater department a few years ago, had communicated with, I think, Ernie and Chris, and basically, they were, they were looking into getting sewer and water for the vacant lots, the two, when the park is not there, and then I believe there's another one. And Haas was saying, "Oh, well, you can do that, but you're going to have to opt in, opt into the, to the 2002 agreement", which is called the Intergovernmental Wholesale Water Service Agreement between the city of Racine, water utility, et cetera. And actually, this is, Bonstar, I was reading wrong. There's too many agreements up here. I know it's weird just hearing attorneys saying there's too many agreements, but anyway. No, it's got, it's like, there's 50 words in it. It's an intergovernmental agreement relating to the providing of sewer service, stormwater service, to the various municipalities. And Elmwood Park and North Bay opted out of it in 2002, as they could under the agreement. And anyway, Haas was saying, "Well, we, we'll, we'll provide, we'll provide service to those areas, but you have to opt into this 2002 agreement." So, there's a provision saying that parties can, who had opted out, can opt back in. But, the problem is, he was kind of calculating informally what the cost would be, and it was tens of thousands of dollars when you add it up. And it just was not, obviously not a feasible option. And so, at the, at the meeting, Attorney Letney was also hinting in fact that, he was very ambiguous as well, that, you know, maybe the village could opt into the 2002 agreement. And again, I mean, there's, there's issues with that in terms of, you know, getting up to speed. There's provisions in that agreement saying that an opting-in party has to do this, this, and this. And the bottom line there is, it's going to be cost prohibitive as well. But, also, I think that that's another, just another kind of ploy, basically, like, you know, like, look at the diversionary tactic, look at, this is what we want to do, and we might do this, but just come out and tell us exactly what you've had enough time, what is your plan? And I have to just, I thought I'd make that clear to him, but I know in certain terms, I have to just tell him that. So, anyway, that's the history of this 2002 agreement and that situation. But, the bottom line here is, that's why I want them to, I do want to see what their motive is, if it's some sort of, if there is some, I don't think they're losing money. They, Elmwood Park is paying a, pretty much an equal rate as the other municipalities. I don't know why they would, I mean, they've never complained that they're losing money on Elmwood Park, or that Elmwood Park is a problem in any way. So, anyway, I just have to nail them down in terms of like, you know, basically, if I'm wrong, if we're wrong, and they're, they do have good faith, then I'd gladly be wrong. But, I'm going to basically call them on it and say, you know, time's a wasting, we can't, we suspect you're doing this, and you're going to just leave them high and dry. And so, anyway, that's that situation. And again, I mean, again, it's, I can't see them legally, or as a practical matter, doing something like that, just saying, "Oh, well, we're going to, I don't know, logistically and technically, I don't know exactly what they would do in terms of..." I mean, there's not a big switch on the wall, they just turn it off, but... So, I can't imagine that they would be doing that. But, I think, as Tom intimated, they're going to hold that over your heads to get some sort of leverage, like, sign this, or sign this, and/or do this, or replace the infrastructure, which is crazy. And so, that's that situation. But, with the water situation, they haven't really, and that probably is tied into this, that they're sandbagging on that as well, and they're just sitting back. But, he was very nonchalant, like, "Oh, by the way, we need to kind of talk about the water situation too", and, right?
Yeah.
And then he, the mayor, mentioned something about the mayor, and, but there again, he never specified what their exact concern was, or what they wanted, wanted, you know, the village to do about, about any of this.
It's like a blind thing to lie about.
Yeah, and so, then they, then we set a meeting for next week, the 16th, 5 o'clock, to meet with them again. And certainly, if not before, I mean, at that point in time, they're going to hear a, hear that we, you know, we have this concern, that they need to, you know, tell us exactly what they're planning to do, and what they want the village to do. And, because the first meeting was more kind of an exploratory meeting, kind of see, you know, see what they were wanting to do. And then subsequent to that, like I said, I was hoping that they would actually specify that. And that's kind of how contract negotiations work, you know, you need to start with a contract. And also, another thought I had is, you know, I'm not trying to complicate things per se, but we can control the narrative in terms of like, you know, making a proposal, as the, well, I mean, we can keep the status quo, I guess. However, however, that would be memorialized. It probably would benefit the village if there was an actual agreement, just not, you know, there are... That was the other document I had. They did mention that they would want, that they would propose, there's, I think, five other, including Mount Pleasant, this is the water agreement, this is for Caledonia, only almost 100 pages, so... But, they would want, basically, the village to, Elmwood Park and North Bay to, basically, sign something like this. And thankfully, for your budget, I haven't looked through this and read each page and, you know, analyzed it, but I can't imagine that, I mean, if they're pushing the village to sign something like this, I can't imagine it's in the village's best interest, per se. And again, so, I think the advantage the village has is that, you know, there's been a kind of a status quo, things have been going fine. I, again, I have no technological experience with sewers and, you know, water pipes and that sort of thing, but it's just, it's kind of funny how that, you know, all of a sudden, after the agreement terminates, now, now they're concerned about infrastructure and...
Right.
Problems, and there's never been any of that previously.
So, we do have a meeting Wednesday, 5, at City Hall.
Yeah, 5 o'clock.
And we'll see if anything comes to fruition.
Who's going to be there?
Myself, Latira, and Mark.
Okay.
Do you want to join us? Oh, and then who else? Attorney Letney.
Letney, and then Jim Sullivan, the new city administrator, and then Paul Borl, the prior administrator.
Right. So, Warren Holt was the city administrator, and then Jim Sullivan. So, they've been on communication with us.
You think you can get Cory Mason to be there?
Probably not. I doubt it.
We, we could ask.
We've got the president of the village, we have our village attorney, we've got our administrator. You're going to have all that same thing on your same side.
Except for...
I know, and I, you're trying, you're using common sense and logic.
There's none of this, I don't think so logic.
I will ask, I will definitely ask.
I think Cory should be there.
And I think, yeah, especially since Scott was kind of tossing his name out.
Yeah, and it's just kind of like, okay, Cory, this is what we're doing. I know the water department is a big moneymaker for the city, and I think it's only fair that he comes in, and that you can have a face-to-face and say, "Listen, don't screw with us, let's figure this out." And if they want, they have to give us a year to know that they're going to pull out on this. And they have, and they have not given us anything, so they go up until January and say, "Uh-huh, uh-huh, oh, yeah, maybe, uh-huh."
Well, there's, again, the sewer situation and the water situation. They haven't given any notice about the water, none at all, other than Letney making informal comments.
We did, when this all came up, I actually even called Ernie. And then Ernie was like, "Keep it..." I have a timeline of every, well, we have all of our paper trail and their paper trail, but I've also written down everything that we have done on our side and that information that was not given to us. And I just...
Yeah, I mean, that's why it's good, we've got a paper trail.
Tony.
That, I mean, and it all adds up to, hey, you know, it's being terminated, but what's the next step, what do you want to do? And if they had a concern about infrastructure, they would tell you, or if they had a specific plan, they would tell you, and so...
I think they might be saying, "You're going to have problems with your infrastructure, let us fix it, ka-ching, ka-ching", you know, and it's just like, oh, my. So, we've got this...
Well, I think in prior, the prior agreement, basically, they were in charge of the main, the main facilities, and then the connecting pipes, and the village had obligations as to that, but...
Is it possible that due to the city having issues with other municipalities that are very public right now, that we are collateral damage, and either being shoved aside, and they're going to try to fix that and use us as part of the fight of that?
Well, I use the word, the name Scott, he and I are not friends, okay? I mean, I don't hate anybody, per se, the suit. I represented Sandy while she was in the city, for two years, we went back and forth, and finally, she prevailed. So, he knows that, you know, and I think he's got a sense that nobody on this board is a pushover. He knows that, I mean, I don't want to have a lawsuit, I'm just saying, he knows that I'm not going to empower to him and just back off. So, I get what you're saying, I don't think they're...
Like, I'll be part of the...
No, I don't think they're looking at that, that, being that specific about it.
But, Caledonia did mention to me at that RCA ICC meeting, "Oh, the city did the same thing to us a few years ago." And I, and I, we were in the middle of the meeting, so I couldn't necessarily chat with him, because I really want to talk to the city administrator, and we were talking about other things, but I was like...
Well, if they screw with the water situation, it's weird, because the sewer utility, the sewer utility isn't overseen by the Public Service Commission. However, the rate setting regarding the sewer utility is. So, if there's any, any onerous or illegal... So if there's any, any, uh, onerous or, or illegal actions on their part as to the sewer agreement, then that would have to go to court. But on the water situation, there's, they, they can't do certain things. I would say they can't cut off the water and they can't use the, they can't, you know, come up with false premises for leverage and then, you know, they can't do what they're doing. And in that case, um, it'd be a lot more, a lot simpler. The, the Public Service Commission would oversee that and have, you know, there'd be a complaint, and then they'd have a, a hearing. And I, they don't want, they wouldn't want the Public Service Commission looking over that situation. And so, um, you know, you, you, I think we're, we're doing all we can do at this point, but now at this point, they really have to just, you know, tell us because, um, I mean, we're not being petty here. This is affecting everybody, the elder residents and, and he, you know, Letni lives in Lake Geneva, first of all, I've never understood that, um, you know, the city attorney lives in Lake Geneva. And, uh, you know, he, he doesn't care, really, and, and so, yeah, I mean, it'd be good to have the, the mayor there. Because he was mentioning the mayor's name, I'll, I'll shut up now, I know he's like, yeah.
No, we're gonna shut up, but thank you for all of the information. And we will keep you all posted, or I'll have Latira, Kendall, reach out and let us, let you know how the meeting goes on Wednesday. Um, and then, as you know, I can't be a phone. Um, so, just, we'll keep you posted, and then hopefully we talk again in November, we'll have a meeting. So, thank you, Mark, I appreciate all your insight and all your, all your work that you're doing on this.
Have a good night.
Kind of whisper it to the media's ear.
Um, would it be helpful to just
I would say just kinda see what
Let's see, but that's Wednesday.
On the sixteenth, 'cause that'll, that'll, we'll know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause we're not gonna go out, it, it's not gonna be, there's not, I don't think there's gonna be any ambiguity as to that.
Yeah, well, we hope so, but then, you know, you've got Goliath in the little village, you know, it's like, uh, David and Goliath, and it's just, uh, it wouldn't have a good publicity for the city.
Right, that's what I'm gonna say, worst case scenario for them, would be, we're, we're telling them to be specific, come out and tell us, and then if they don't, then
Yeah, yeah.
Then he can release
Tom reached out to see if he could go door-to-door and let the city, or let the village know what was going on, but I wanted to wait until we really do know.
Yeah, so on the sixteenth or after.
So we'll keep doing, we'll keep residents in the know as well.
Get your running shoes on.
Yeah.
Or whatever shoes you use to go door-to-door.
So hang tight, until we'll let you know on the sixteenth, you know.
Put on your, what's your law, law enforcement?
Gives me something to do, beer.
Brad knows a lot about the water
Yes, 'cause there, he has a business downtown, Racine, and Frank just gone up.
I think you were on the board when that was on going about two or two?
Oh, here.
Your photography school, yeah.
So, thank you, Mark, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, Board, for continuing to plow that, we're gonna try and get through the next two, I think, quite quickly, for three, really, two. Um, so, presentation of twenty twenty-five Village of Elmwood Park budget. Latira's gonna do a little presentation. I just, thank you.
She is now.
Oh, okay.
She's in the neighborhood.
Okay.
All right, so, this is the present of twenty twenty-five budget to everyone. Here we have our chart, um, how the village is run. At the top, you see the village residents, and then directly a little bit, there's the board trustees and the village president and the village administrator, which is who I am in the middle. Um, and then we have our finance chair, lead commissioner, street lights, road sewer commissioner, and then just, um, to the right here, we have the planning commission under the village president, foreign appeals, village attorney, assessor, um, and then we have our inspectors and election officials. And, uh, directly down the middle here, you see the, um, between the village administrator, there's the maintenance staff, the hall openers and closers, and the hall gym and rental salesperson. And our mission statement, values, um, the twenty twenty-five budget reflects, uh, the village's overall mission. Uh, value number one, have a strong sense of community. Value two, a safe and healthy community. Uh, value three, a park-like atmosphere. Number four, a strong infrastructure. And number five, fiscally responsible community for both residents and the government. Here in this sheet, I have, um, the twenty twenty-four challenges. We had several furnaces go out in the buildings and going to spend, and so I was really happy that we were able to replace a lot of those. Um, we had unexpected vacancies, um, which was a large chunk of money, uh, that we didn't receive for building five when it was empty, uh, for several months. And then building two being empty since July. Um, and currently, we're navigating that sewer water agreement, we were just discussing. So, uh, we have to renew it January twenty twenty-five. So, some of the accomplishments we've made, uh, we were able to do those renovations on Taylor Complex. Uh, we moved those furnaces and windows indoors, and, uh, we renewed contracts with long-term tenants, so, um, that was pretty awesome. And we consistently kept our contracts with snow removal, the waste pickup, um, even though right now we're gonna have a new contractor for, uh, snow removal, um, still consistent and steady. Um, we've been continuously updating our presence in the village and, um, different events and things like that, uh, the website, keeping everyone engaged with Facebook and things like that. Um, and now we are gonna be planning the second phase of road projects, which is really exciting for the village. And we, um, add it to Norman, so we have the new Easter, um, egg hunt and the turkey truck. So, it's nice to see everyone else, um, just think it's a great time to, uh, engage with everyone. So, the twenty twenty-five budget, uh, you all have a paper, um, in your package as well, if you wanna follow along. All right, so, there has been a lot of major changes here with the tax revenue, uh, sub seven percent, um, from last year. So, last year was two hundred eighty-six thousand total in front of the total tax revenue. Um, and then going to twenty twenty-five, we're seeing three hundred and six thousand, roughly. Um, there's no real changes with lottery tax collection. We do have one special assessment, um, we did remove the tree stump from residents recently, and, um, that's pretty steady, the tax revenue. The next thing to look at is our internal governmental revenues. Um, so we're at seventy thousand, that's what we're looking at for twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's just a five percent increase from last year, so pretty steady with that. Um, there were some big changes more with fire dues. Uh, last year was two thousand for the budget, and this year we're looking at twenty-five hundred for a fire dues. So that's the biggest change there. And also with income of licensing and permits, uh, we have like a hundred percent increase with the plumbing permits, uh, for next year. So, last year was budgeted two hundred fifty, uh, you know, this month, Mark, we were six ninety. So, that was a big increase there, and then electrical permits are drastically increased. So, we budgeted a hundred fifty last year, um, and we're gonna be at around a thousand now. So that's what we're gonna budget, just a thousand for the electrical permits. Uh, the dog licenses, that, there hasn't been much changes for that, but there have been those changes for the electrical permits and then the plumbing permits. For fines and interest, um, there's been like a decrease for interest income. So, um, last year we were at three hundred seventy-three thousand budgeted, and this year we're at three hundred and ninety-three thousand, so that's about, uh, twenty more thousand in total. So just a seven percent increase, um, from last year for the twenty twenty-four budget, uh, to twenty twenty-five for fines for adventures and penalties. Uh, for Taylor Complex, we have about a year left, um, so that's really exciting, and then we're gonna change here, um, with the property, and then the value is gonna be increased, the dollars renovations, the windows, this price sense of, um, so I'm really excited about that, um, it may be a little bit more of insurance that we have to renew, um, for the year. So it's not any drastic changes here, um, but I'm just really excited to, um, everything to y'all. And then, going into general government expenditures, um, for twenty twenty-four is election year, so there was a lot of, uh, budgeting for elections and things, um, it's gonna go down a little bit. Next year, uh, just 'cause it's cooled down, it's a big year when you have the president, uh, presidential elections as well. Um, association dues and conventions, that's gonna go down a little bit. Last year there's some trainings, things like that, and, um, Kendall did some trainings as well. So, that was, uh, why that was a increase last year, but that's gonna decrease. So the biggest, uh, decreases here, it's gonna be, um, the association dues for the conventions, and I, I mainly, I feel like more to next year, it's good to link up and discuss things with other municipalities, see what they're doing, um, it's always a really good learning experience, uh, going out and seeing where else. And then the events, that's really not gonna change much. Um, friends and the publications, that's gonna go down a little bit more, uh, next year. The property insurance, that may change, uh, just 'cause we're gonna be meeting with, uh, the insurance agent and adding those changes that we need to the property, so, um, hope there's not too much of a difference there. And then we have that building assessment on there, um, so that's just suspected. Here we have payroll, um, we haven't had too many changes here except for, for the inspectors. Uh, last year we budgeted for two thousand, and, uh, this year it's only thirty thousand there. And then, uh, for the employment portion of S S, social security and Medicare, that's gonna just go twenty percent. So, from sixty-five hundred to seventy-eight hundred there. Here we have information about public safety, um, there hasn't been too much of increases, just that steadiness that we always have had, um, so there's not much of a change here at all. Last year we budgeted fifty-one thousand nine hundred forty dollars, and this year it'll be fifty-two thousand nine hundred fifteen, so it's not much of a difference there. I'm just happy that we're able to secure the contracts and things are going well. And then here, things have been pretty steady. Last year we budgeted overall for public works, hundred and seven thousand, and then this year about seven thousand more, hundred and fourteen thousand. And again, then we have the increases with John disposal, which is contractual, um, and then maintenance for Kaiser Park and, um, infrastructure improvements. So it's not a big difference there either. Uh, here we have some expenses. So, uh, for reserve fund, LGIP, um, there's a forty-seven percent decrease here for twenty twenty-five. Last year we budgeted four ninety thousand, this year it's gonna be, uh, twenty-six thousand. Um, and then for twenty twenty-four, for the reserve fund, forty-four thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars, down to, uh, twenty-one thousand. And then for the lift station fund, that stays the same, at five thousand. And this is just a high charge for revenue that data. Um, so this is kind of a big deal, uh, just 'cause we have vacancies, uh, so the income for, um, twenty twenty-four really wasn't what we expected, just 'cause we lost tenant number five, and they cared, and it was taking for oil, it's hard to secure the tenants, um, so we wanna make sure we keep in good relations with our tenants and, um, try to work with them sometimes, um, it was just really hard. And now we're looking, um, to build, uh, two B, where we had the pastor recently. And, uh, we're gonna work, so hopefully we secure another lease. We're looking at five years, and it was nice, we did meet with, um, the prospective tenant, and he would like to bring him for another five years in in our lease, and usually it's like another two years, and he would like to guarantee the five, so that'll be like another ten-year lease potentially. Uh, and then we have Shelley next door, she's still has seven years, so it's really nice. So we did add that in the budget, um, so we're hoping to sign that lease, uh, for two B at the next like week. And then, um, the church is owned by the building, building number five. So there were some changes for the building five and building two. Um, everyone else has been here, so we were able to renew all of our leases, pretty much the one left, and then our homes began, and they were building two B, they're now in building one, and they're doing good, um, they're great addition to building one.
And not distracting anyone, just to break all these complaints, it's great. That's good. So that's been nice.
I think it was a really good move to bring them over and, um, keep the tenants, these are great tenants. So we did discuss too, this year, like a lot of tenants, when it would be signed leases, they expressed, um, like almost every time, why do I gotta keep having a three percent increase? So that's what we talked about, uh, long-term kids, would it have a one percent increase? Uh, just 'cause the tenants and the steady economy, it is, they were not very happy about it.
Three ended up being a lot.
Yeah.
It sounds not very, very much, but it ended up being a lot.
Yeah.
Um, and that was, I think, something Chris suggested, and so we kind of backtracked and thought, we don't, we'd rather keep our tenants and not shoot ourselves in the foot by asking for just extra money. Um, and they were much happier with one percent increase, so.
And, um,
It was more like cost of living, you know, when you think about cost of living.
Yes, and then, um, with like tenants, they said they don't wanna do like a long-term lease. Like, most people here are longer-term leases, except for like the smaller offices and the ones with like the mailings, they're more longer-term. Um, if we invite them on short-term, we probably did a three percent, so. But since we have people, you know, I'm gonna be here like three plus years, I think it's really, uh, nice to keep the status quo. With a little increase. And again, they, all these buildings, they bring a consistent revenue, so, um, and I, in the, uh, near future, I would like to engage, um, the tenants more, because I realized when I've sent out the newsletters, I wasn't a tenant, went to the tenants, so I started putting them on their doors. And like, I did, like, people talk or treat and things like that, um, we did have people interested about it. Yeah, so I wanna make sure I included. And then maintenance, um, it did increase a little bit here, uh, for baby school, there was a lot of issues there. We had some leaks, the toilet leaked, um, some things electrical, uh, the fence, different things, they just popped up a lot up here. Now we are, uh, still at least with them, they did not break ground, so they were supposed to stay to twenty twenty-six, but they're planning to stay longer. And I was, um, starting to think about like, what do we do with, uh, baby school? It is part of like the historic, um, society and things like that, so it's definitely something to care for. Um, it's a lot of, um, planned over there, and, uh, so I'm just happy to have you on board, but it's always something like to think about, like, what do we do, worst-case scenario? Or, um, I'll do a follow-up with them just to get a little more information, but I was just happy to hear that they, they stayed longer, they have not broke ground, um, for probably another two or three years after. So, um, Taylor Complex, we did, uh, decrease like what we need here, because we did renovations and everything's really good now. Um, we shouldn't be saving like the energy and things like that with the new, um, windows, things like that. Um, so we did decrease that a little bit, and then the grounds maintenance, um, student's really good. And we did kinda talk about, uh, for grounds maintenance, that would be item, uh, that you brought up, the renovation, so we can take a look at that, but currently, uh, last year was, the budget was two thousand, and now it's, um, three thousand, going into twenty twenty-five, so that's something we can definitely look into. Um, fuel expenses haven't really changed, complex lights, all that, um, they're really changed. It's really just the baby school, 'cause it's just a lot of things going on. I was, um, I think maybe we should have just added that when we did the renovations too, 'cause it's cool. So, it is part of historical society, but, um, it would have to definitely put a lot of thought into that. All righty, so for Taylor Complex, uh, we do adjust, um, on some of the utilities in building two, because they kind of because they kind of share like a meter or something like that. Um, and we're working that out in the lease for the new tenant, um. So there's, um, there's always increases with utilities, nothing drastic, but it does go up. And they are, uh, building four and five, they maintain their own. So building five, they handle everything, use on slip, anything like that, and building four as well. And so what you see here, um, this is gonna probably go down here, forty-three percent, uh, for one A. And then down here for building two, well, we have that vacancy, so we've been kind of seeing the bills there for utilities. So, um, we're gonna have that filled now, so that can, uh, come over our shoulders in building two.
Why is the water so high on building three? So what's the water?
You know, we actually talked about that, um, I've been looking through it, cause, um, actually Kendall, you brought up that the utilities in building five is basically still the same as well?
No, um, I had concerns about the water bills because there's no reason that building one or three should use more water than building two, who is a spot. And if you look at these numbers that came in under the, uh, let's see, let's look at the twenty twenty-four six month column, um.
It's almost the same.
Yeah, there's no reason that those should be the same. And like, um, Brad Jake was saying, if you look at the water bills, it's astronomical what they're charging and it doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, but it's something to really look into, especially with.
So also something to consider in building one, six thousand dollars for utilities to run building one, okay? We have on the income for building one, we have leasees paying us a total of approximately twenty-four hundred dollars to offset that six thousand dollar cost for building one. We should consider how much we think, how much park, since our office is there, how much we should be responsible for versus how much we do, the rest of the renters in that building should be responsible. Cause currently, they're only responsible for like roughly thirty, forty percent of the utilities when we only have one little office.
Right, so we should.
So should we be looking at that? It would mean increasing their utility costs, and most of them pay fifty dollars a month on top of their about three fifty, three thirty lease payment. Um, it would be significant, but right now we're actually paying the utilities.
Right, and maybe we need, I, I would say instead of just increasing, we probably have to show them the bill, I would assume.
I'm fine with not making a profit, just like us deciding what's the percentage that how much park should pay for our office?
And what's fair.
Yeah, and just so you know, this is how much the bill is, so you're gonna have to, yeah. But I do think we need to not just say, we're raising your utility costs, but we have to give them some, some sort of document to show, like this is the cost, um, cause it's definitely not, especially when you both are only in the office twice a week.
Yeah, and, and really, I don't even account that against them.
No.
Because then that's our office space and some of them only use their office a couple of times, uh, two.
But we should probably look at that, yes, for sure. What I am curious is why the water is that price?
It's very expensive.
Yeah, and I, I can send out a notification, you know, um, just letting them know that the cost of living is a lot everywhere. So I think they, they would understand.
We won't be able to change it until their contract's up.
Oh, not at all.
We can't just ask them to pay the money, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
So I'll keep in mind checking what I do in the other leases.
Is there anything that you, anything that's else that stands out, concerns, um, changes? Um, I did, I wish Linda was here. I know we always set aside twenty-five hundred dollars for the events. Um, right now we have Kendall, you told me, and I don't remember what it was.
Um, it's about three thousand.
It's about three thousand.
Going into your Christmas party.
Right.
And then into the start of next year. There's no really other events, right? Christmas party and then.
But you're.
Oh, just.
But that doesn't come up, probably. We get like a maybe a prize or something, but it didn't, but nothing.
Now, the payable expenses, the assessor expenses, um, is that, yeah, he's, uh, uh? You, you said he's earning a lot more than that, right?
The assessor and expenses, we pay him two hundred and fifty dollars every quarter just to keep him as our assessor.
Okay.
And then if you look above in the general government, you'll see village reassessment. That's where his, his one-time fee is for reassessing, just right there above.
Just the, uh, thousand dollars?
The nine thousand.
Oh, nine thousand?
Yeah.
Which, which you said that might be ten thousand?
No, I never saw that.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, that's, okay, well, I just, okay, cool, cool, cool.
Thank you. Um, I did, I did want you to look at, and I guess I didn't realize this is six month mark. One thing that came up was, um, now that we, our maintenance guys named Kate enough. I know we gave them a little bit of a raise recently.
I was just doing the math on that and you would have to give them a six percent raise to increase from seventeen to eighteen dollars. That's what, that's what a one dollar increase would be, six percent. Um, so I don't know, I don't know what kind of.
We can always move money, we can always move money later, right, if we need to? Like if we don't budget it, but I feel like in the past you've always said, I'm gonna take it from here, right, if we have it, okay. All right. I don't, I don't have any questions or any concerns at the moment. Um, I don't know, is there any, but anything that stands out? We will approve the budget at the next meeting, so this is definitely approval.
Oh, this can be edited and needs to go on the paper probably on Monday when I get in the office. So we have enough time to make the public aware.
Anybody has any changes? Speak now or forever hold your peace by Monday?
The one thing I just wanted to note that.
Sorry, Kendall.
Um, the income, no, not income, expenses for payroll has not changed. I just entered exactly what everyone's been getting paid. Um, so if you have any inkling that you think any of the payroll might change, that's not reflected in this budget.
Right.
Um, the road maintenance, twenty thousand, we did not use that this year yet, really. Um, I guess it's there as a safety net, but if you don't think that needs to be that high, you can move it.
Okay.
Um.
What would road maintenance be?
I mean, which is always there.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, that's interesting.
I mean, the year prior, we spent fifteen thousand, we had to repair the stuff in front of my house and then the, right when you came into office, you repaired that other thing on the other side.
Yeah.
Um, so that all added up, but like, do we foresee any problems this next?
Well, we do have one road maintenance issue with the other nine plus bin on tree lane.
I guess, yes, that will be increasing after we pay to have that sewer grade fixed.
Okay, but that, that's not twenty thousand dollars, right?
I mean, I don't mind having that there, cause you can't really have like a slush fund paid just in case account. So I don't mind keeping the twenty thousand there, sort of.
Yeah, that's fine.
Keep it in the back room mines.
Is there anything else?
I have a question. Laura, I'm sorry. Tell her you were talking.
Oh, I'm done.
Okay, um, with the rent for building five, twenty twenty four, that budget thirty-nine six, and how much did we actually get last year? Wasn't that pretty much vacant the whole year or were they, they were there paying?
You can see at twenty twenty-four six month mark, we had only gotten thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that was, that was big.
That's why we have so much of a deficit this year, cause we were lacking in rent.
Yeah, yeah, because that just went down, okay, three percent. Okay.
So, can I move on? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, as I said before, if you have any comments, questions, thoughts, you need to email Kendall before Monday.
No, so no edit as of right now to the budget.
No edit as of right now, is there anything anybody wants to change? It's in stone in Monday and you can't say anything after this meeting.
Um, I just wanted to make a point, um, you guys probably noticed that there's a decrease in the interest income.
Yeah.
That's because we're using up our money in the LGV, LGIP accounts where we're making a lot of interest. And as we spend it, we're not gonna have money there to make interest on.
Got it.
So that was my best guess for this next year, especially since when we deplete our window fund, that's in our LGIP account. And then, um, the savings account under the expenses at the very, very bottom decreased it a lot because we have other, that's all we had left really to throw in there. Um, cause everything else we moved around, we have the nine thousand in the reassessment. Um, there were o- other upticks in, in utility costs that kind of ate into the possible savings fund. Um, so just wanted to make that clear.
And after looking at this budget, are we okay to do phase two of the roads?
Well, this has nothing to do with the base, cause it doesn't have anything to do with the loan.
Because we're taking out a loan, but we have enough money to take out the loan to pay ourselves back.
We do, but the, the thing that the board has to consider is that then we might not have enough money to do phase three.
Right.
For like at least ten to fifteen years, so you have to consider that. So the most important roads need to be done first.
Yes, yes, okay.
With the assessment, that will go up and that will increase our.
Yeah.
Right. Correct.
Yeah.
And our buildings will be paid off next year.
Yes.
And utilities was a big hit. We were paying utilities on building five, we're paying utilities on half of building two all year.
Yeah.
That is a lot of money.
And I'm really hoping that Kendall's helped us out.
Yes, and so if we can equalize utilities and not be paying that, we can increase our budget for other line items for the next year, so.
So, yeah, so it's a big year this year, which is.
I also, you know me, I'm a conservative and I like to play it safe, so I, I was playing it safe there and on almost all of the lines. Cause I don't like getting into, yeah.
It's gonna have issues, sorry. Glad you're in this, yeah, I appreciate that, but, okay, moving on to the last, um, second to last. Discussion regarding possible signage for prospective tenant in two B. So, but Tyria and I had a meeting with Neil Verantik and, um, and Randy Savaglio, who's our realtor, about the signage. And Neil is a State Farm agent. Um, I want everyone to keep in mind, this is the first time we have a franchise in our midst. The church and the church not only franchises, the spa, it's her own personal business. They have two therapists in building one and harmonious beginnings, all personal businesses. This is the first time we can have a franchise. Um, I did ask the question because I actually, Ken happened to be at the car show when Randy kind of talked to me about this. And I said, why, why all three signs? Why do we have to have three signs plus he wants to have one out on the street?
This is actually.
I, I, hang on, I want, I want you to just listen, listen, hear me out. Um, he said for his branding, because it is a franchise, the best thing, the best way he can promote his business is to have his name out there. Also, he can't, doesn't have the choice of what kind of signs he can use. It has to be from State Farm. He has a huge book that he can pull from, but there's only specific signs he can do. Um, because I was like, this is kind of redundant. Now, I do wanna point out, I, we did ask to have white signs with red lettering rather than red signs with white lettering. We wanted to see if that was a possibility. Um, I also want everyone to keep in mind, after speaking with him, um, he is ready to, he, he right now has a business in downtown Racine and he hates being there. The parking's terrible, he has a terrible tenant upstairs. He has been in business with State Farm for, I forget how many years, but for a fair amount of time. This is the only time he wants to move his business. He does not wanna leave. So he said, I'm willing to sign a five-year lease, but do know that I'm probably gonna be in business for twenty years, so this is possibly a twenty-year lease. Now, going in, I was like, I'm hoping we can meet in the middle. I think it would benefit us to say, we are okay with these signs because it, we are shooting ourselves in the foot if we walk away from this because he wants to sign a lease and start paying in January, move in in July. He'd be a perfect fit next to the spa because it's not a lot of business, it's really hard to get someone in there. Um, he already has some ideas of things he wants to do within the building. I think he'd take really good care of it. Um, his sister is part of the business, his son is also part of the business. So when he retires, his son might take over. This is just like money that could come at us and I was like, we are, we are literally arguing about a sign. That's kind of how I felt, like I didn't wanna, and it's not lit up, nothing is illuminated. That is something else he told me, he said, nothing is illuminated, it is all acrylic, nothing will light up, so it's not like you're looking at a Walmart sign. Um, that was his, so I wanna know what you think. I, walking away, he is really a nice man.
He was very excited about like engaging in the village.
Oh, he want, he said when he worked downtown, he was a part of partying the pavement all the time, he'd hand out bottles of water. I could see him maybe sponsoring something for Toons on Taylor, also handing out water or something, doing something at, at any of our Toons events. Um, he just really wants to get his name out there and I just thought it was a really good idea for the village.
So, so, huh, I mean, why three signs? Four, if you can.
Well, yeah, I'm just talking.
He basically said anything, so when I asked him, because that was my number one question, he said, it is the best thing I can do for my business is to put my name next to the sign, that's the best way I can advertise.
Well, I don't, yeah.
I mean, you may go one by the door, but I mean, uh, I mean, going down Taylor at ninety miles an hour, you're not gonna be like, hey, State Farm dudes here.
My concern with this one is everyone's gonna want it as well.
Yeah.
And it's gonna, it's gonna look like a.
His branding is very important to him.
Well, of course, I, that's totally.
Get on LinkedIn.
Can we just tell him, again, everyone's gonna wanna maybe do the same thing, then you got signs up, that's a thing. Cause if we let one guy do it.
Yeah, it is all.
Well, the only thing that, that you can draw, it would be, and then, and you are opening up a can of worms, cause of course, everything opens with a can of worms, is not everybody can put a sign up, like maybe that if you hire a tenant, you could put, you know, a sign up, and then, and then we can do a Mount Pleasant trick where we, this is how big you put it, this is where, this is where you can put it, these are the limits and this is our village ordinance for the signs that you can have on Taylor Avenue. I mean, it's, it's, I, I, I don't, I don't have an issue.
By the way, he could have done tonight, his daughter's getting married this weekend. And I said, don't, we will just fill you in on how the board meeting goes. Um, but I, I told him, I said, I will talk to the board to see what they say.
So I'm just.
I, I personally, my thought was after meeting with him, I think it's silly we're fighting about a sign. And I get like opening a can of worms, I don't know if anybody else, like I don't know if Shelley's gonna be upset about this. He has to go to the city to get approval first, before he can get approval from us.
For what?
For signs, because it's in the city of Racine.
Oh, true.
But he's gonna get approval for all of these signs, I didn't see any problem.
I just personally, I don't like the way this one looks. Did the other three in the building, I, I'm okay with.
And he was actually waiting for some confirmation too.
I thought, I said the same, the only reason he can't change it is because the only reason he can't change it is because that is like the standard in the State Farm book.
He has to have this.
He doesn't have any, no, this, which one are you talking about, this one, Brian?
Uh.
Or the one on the road?
I mean, the one in the grass.
That's about the same size as, um, what the village rental signs are, right, Kendall?
That one's five feet wide.
No, 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 the one in the, on the road.
Well, Kelly said there's also, you could have heard them on, put a sign there and.
I mean, I mean, I honestly don't have, I mean, if you were to do it properly, I wouldn't have a problem with having this, him and the spa put out signage on the board. I, I, I don't, if it's done right, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, they'll just put out whatever they want.
I don't have a problem with it, so.
Well, we have final say, but I'm just telling you, from State Farm, he has, like, he could not change, I wanted this one to be smaller. He can't change the size of it.
Really?
He can't, there was, there, there was a, the only type of sign that he could pick from was honestly, like, it was called the monument sign and there was like, this is the standard size, that's what they gave him, sticky.
And we did ask for like a white background.
But I did ask for it to be a white background with red lettering.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm assuming he doesn't have a three by six dollar one.
No.
Cause that's.
But he's not gonna, he's not gonna have a lawn, but we were.
Huh?
He's not gonna, maybe that's the requirement.
He had stuff on his door.
We'll put concrete in there then.
He had stuff on his door and he had stuff above the, the, the building, like you can see it's, yeah, six three.
I mean, I, I don't think it would be inappropriate to say, okay, bring your staff again, let's just come up with an agreement of what the signs are.
It's this there.
You could do that too.
I'm fine, also, that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, just, just then there, then there isn't this and then if somebody else doesn't want to, you, you know, we have this.
And I can also have some comments at the meeting, but I know. And I can also have him come to the meeting, but I know we really want, would like to sign the lease.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think you should bring him the lease, I just think, it's, it's like playing defense in New York.
But he won't sign the lease, I don't think, until we have a decision on the signs.
So he asked for like, this is kind of what it looks like, and we asked for like the white background.
I'm personally fine with the red, if that's what he wants. Isn't, that's like their colors, isn't it?
Well, they, they also have white backgrounds.
So we were kind of asking for like the white background, just cause we have the white background.
That's a little bit less like fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Looks better against.
Or maybe we do like two of the white, like this small one to red and.
I don't know. I just, I wonder, we have, we have been trying to fill this space since like April, May.
Is there a few more that it's a square that needs the first franchise?
We get complaints, I don't know. Some kind of.
Yeah, I don't think they're complaining, I just, it's company people, I want to put a sign up and so on.
I don't know if the church, but like our report, it's something you can't just stick out, you know?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of other offices and so on, and it's like, you know, my old American family.
You two can put this together, so I, I feel like Ernie and Bert are there. I feel like Ernie and Bert. No, never again, just sit next to each other.
That's what I said as soon as I walked in.
It's like Ernie and Bert.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly what I thought, but the two of them together, Ernie and Bert, all the way.
I'm Jesus.
And he's Ernie.
Jesus right here.
So we have officially signed happy portion of the meeting.
So, okay, so my, my thought is.
Okay, I mean, I think there's room for negotiation on what, what it is. I don't, I was just telling, I don't know if anyone even remembers like the big fight between Dairy Queen on Highway twenty over by Case and Mount Pleasant, where the franchise came in and said, okay, you have to change your colors and this and that, so he put all this money in the village, said, the mountain said, no, you can't do that in the village. That's kind of the same sort of thing, and they came to like a negotiation.
That, yeah, I just, the biggest part of this is.
I mean, I don't, I, I think we, I, I think that's, I think we agree with the, with the lease pending approval of, you know, it's, it's like when you put up a fence, you can put up a fence, but you, we just have to be cool with what fence you put up. We're not saying you can't, we're just saying we don't want it looking like, you know, ready out there.
No, I think the signs will look great, I really do. I don't think that they'll be.
I don't, I mean, or, or, or it's, we treat it like we do, again, the defense of, you can have, you have presented to us and we have to approve it. If we're cool with it.
Which I think he's trying to do.
Yeah.
And this is, this is what he's trying to get approved, yeah.
Sure.
That doesn't mean we have to prove everybody's signs.
Yes.
That just means that we.
There you go, that's the way around it.
Yeah, everyone calls a sign the lease actually the first of this month, but.
And it gets back because.
Sure.
So my spouse comes in and says, hey, well, do you want to put up the signs, we, okay, cool, present, present us what you want, what you want to put up. We can say yes or no.
And there is, so there is an Elmwood Park Taylor complex sign policy.
Oh.
Which we found, hold on, we got. And his, some of his signs do not fit into this, which is why this became a thing. Because at the bottom, it says, the board of trustees grants authority to the village administrator and the village president to make a decision. But I really did want to come to all of you before we made this decision. I just think this is too. Too good of a deal.
Ten years.
Talking about the marketing years, aren't you?
Yeah.
That's why he wants to be here, because there are no parking meters.
He lost a lot of customers.
He did, and he, he just, I do really think he would make some good.
Great job, she was for a quarter for an hour now, you're on a date.
Um, Tyria, do you know what's up here?
We're gonna get fired.
Right, so fourteen seventy, uh, fourteen hundred.
That's together.
Fourteen hundred one?
Okay.
And then I go to fourteen seventy, um, the last two years of these.
And that's for five years. Okay, now, if he, I, I don't know why he's got this one up on the.
I have been saying he's a.
Looks like a pizza outside.
I, I don't, I think that's kind of like their sign.
This?
But it also has his name underneath it.
I'm fine with these, that's a big, okay, that's huge.
Three by six.
That's as tall as I have.
But I'm gonna tell you right now, if we, if we, if I do really feel that if we give him pushback on these signs, he's not going to sign the lease.
But you know what, you also have to think that he wants this place pretty bad. He really does.
This, this sign here completely clashes with our aesthetic.
That's why I want it, yeah.
It, it's terrible.
Can we put it on the other side of the road? Not that it's like the other side of the drive.
I, no, that's me, it looks terrible against the Elmwood Park side, and Elmwood Park is what we're about when that about State Farm. But we have a tenant that's.
Like a good neighbor.
Like a good.
We have a gangster in there.
Very good.
Hey Bert, Ernie.
Just wait till May, then August. And now we're.
I just need a decision, I've been talking about this sign for literally three weeks. I need you guys to go, like, if I go back to him, he's not going to sign the lease. I'm not saying that we have to approve it, but if I don't approve it, it's going to be back on the agenda in November with more signs.
So is it, well, if my dream's done, white.
That's what he is looking into and he's not having the answer as of yet.
I personally am fine with the red.
Except that clashes with.
Except this one.
Yeah.
I hate this sign.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything.
And there's no need for it. This sign is huge.
Yeah.
That's going to be this table. And when you get the address and you pull into your GPS, you're gonna see it.
You're right.
You will not miss it. I wish it could be smaller.
You can use it with a fire truck.
Actually, if that was, what's that? Oh, that's true, yeah. I, I see that right now.
I'm done, I'm also done.
It looks like some holes wrapped up right there.
Yeah.
So, you want me to tell him? Tell me what you want me to tell him, I'm gonna make you fall.
So no, no.
No, it's just, that's a very big.
That's a big sign.
Big sign, it's as big as this table.
Roughly.
It, it is, that's huge, that's gonna just, yeah.
How big is the sign on building four for the church?
I don't know.
How big is that one?
That's huge.
I feel like that's. I don't know what to say.
Well, I, here's the thing.
He's gonna want to get the customers from Taylor Avenue to his office.
Just the drive by.
But once they come to Taylor, they don't need a huge sign, because that's his office, they're already off of Taylor. But I don't, I think it might be a deal breaker if you tell him you don't like the sign that's on Taylor, because how will people know that his office is down there?
This one?
Yes.
It is, I don't know, I guess.
It's unnecessary, this is massive, people will see that from Taylor.
Do you think you know how Elmwood likes?
I don't know if people will see it from Taylor.
Because they drive that day, so that's all they want.
But also because we are, we are, we have a hill and we go down. I don't know you'll necessarily see it from Taylor.
The big one?
Well, you're right, I don't.
I don't think you'll see it from Taylor because there is a hill there and then it goes down. Because if we don't put cars up high at a car show, you can't necessarily tell that there's a car show. We do come in on a hill.
I agree.
I, so, okay, I do agree that it's gonna be a, I think he's gonna be upset about no sign on Taylor.
Well, we have a vote again. If I'm not voted, I'll be the only name in that sign.
Is he negotiator, will he negotiate on this, or he's like, pretty much, this is what it's gonna be?
When we talked to him for an hour last Saturday, this was pretty much what he was asking and hoping that the board would approve.
Well, the board's pushing back a little bit, so he's gonna have to give a little bit too.
Ken also did not like the sign on the building.
And, and, and to in reality, right?
I should be on people.
I mean, twelve by eighteen.
Yeah.
A foot by a foot and a half, it's gonna look like an overgrown weed out there in the yard, so that's gonna even look more ridiculous.
I think it's the same size as the village hall rental signs.
Oh, yeah.
You sure about that?
It just doesn't look proportionate in the picture.
Right, right.
But it says twelve by eight.
If that's tiny.
That's this.
Yeah.
It's the same size as the village hall rental signs.
So hopefully.
That's this tall and this.
Yeah.
What if, like, when you go over to Piggly Wiggly over there, they've got, like, out in the road there, they.
I thought the same thing.
They're listing the different businesses and we could put something like over by the.
That's fine.
I'm just finding the same. And just kind of like say, okay, here's the, you know, we've got the spa, we've got the church, it's church, we've got State Farm. And that way people kind of see it there. And maybe if we tell him that, we can have him get rid of that big old thing, it's a table out there.
Huge.
Cause you're gonna have the other renters or the other tenants say, I want that.
Yeah, so, we'd have to look into finding how much a sign like that would cost.
So, could we tell him, okay, we're looking for, we're looking for a solution? Maybe, I mean, compromise.
A compromise. I'm not calling him this weekend's dog.
Well, but I mean, there's a compromise, there's, there's, there's been some track about the one on the, on the road, but we're not, there, there's, there's.
The interesting thing is.
Something there.
Randy is really pushing on us about this. And it's been really hard, like, he's supposed to be working for us, he's really pushing on us about this. And we must have an email or three from Randy every day.
About this?
About this business.
Say, this is what the board's decided, this is my decision.
Yeah.
This is what the board has decided.
So a compromise, I like the idea, I just don't know how much it would cost to do one with more businesses in it.
Maybe like even go to like Sign Pro or something like that, see what they can suggest.
Yeah.
And things that are just.
Is that who we used before Laura for?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, he could have something that could even be taken out with somebody's needs, he just saw it and.
Yeah.
And that way people.
Um, yeah.
On the road, those are drivers.
But the board, well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really hard to.
I was just saying, maybe if you get him to sign the lease though, I mean, compromise to the point that, to your point, that big table one.
I brought it up.
Is redundant and.
It's just.
Okay.
If he uses the one by the street, at least it would get him in off the street, people can't read addresses.
Well, and what if instead of.
I don't have time to memorize.
What if instead of putting the sign like here, right by our sign, if it was maybe like, when you, as you pull into the road, it was like, um, like facing, when you pull in it, you saw the sign. So if you're driving down Taylor and you're looking, you would see it, but you wouldn't see it like.
Parallel.
Right, like if it was just not.
And I just think he's just trying to give us the vision of, he wants a sign closer to the road.
Yeah, I mean, right now, even Prairie School sign is out there, it's been out there forever.
Right.
That's not under Elmwood Park aesthetic, so what are we arguing here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see.
Should we ban the Prairie School sign?
That's just a bad sign.
Um, I just think that maybe.
Is there any other signs that you are, and you, you don't, this, this monument sign, he calls it, is too big. I did bring that up to him and he said, that is the only size, honestly, I can order.
I can't, I'll look.
I don't see that.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't, yeah. I mean, unless you drive down the street and State Farm businesses don't have that sign, I see all these other different signs out there.
Yeah, it's all in the building, yeah.
That's a good one. It's a big sign.
Just, Randy was like, this is his, this is his, you know, franchise and this is, I'm trying to think of what the word was that he said.
That's how he brings it.
This is, this is his branding, it's very, very important to him and this is the only way he can get his name out there, you know, in the public.
You're not gonna see it from the road, the big table. And then by the time you get in, you know where he is and who he is.
Yeah.
I agree, cause I was like, why do we have to have these two signs right next to each other?
You need to say the clientele based on, or is this all new for him?
No, he's been in business for a while.
Okay, well, I'm located at blah, 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 Taylor Avenue, apartment six, Siri, and Randy there, I mean.
Yeah, and one on the building, you could say, we don't want you drilling holes.
Well, I brought that up too, it's an acrylic sign, I, I went to ask, I went so far as to ask Charles, like, is it gonna discolor anything? He said, no, that, it's not gonna harm the brick at all, it's not gonna be a big deal.
Well, it's just stuck on there.
Yeah, it's not, he said, there's, there's not gonna be a big deal, it's not gonna, it's not gonna do any damage. That's what Charles said and I do trust him, cause he knows stuff like that.
Yeah, I kind of like that sign being over by the door.
I liked the one at the door and I liked, I didn't mind, at first I was like, this is redundant, but Randy was not helpful.
We're just.
Well, I just.
Three is very confusing, I just don't, I, I don't understand.
It's almost trashy, you got too much.
It's, it's, it's too intrusive.
Yeah. So I will bring it back to him and say, the board is really concerned to have so many signs, so much money.
Yeah.
So what, what if he says, well, then I'm not signing the lease?
Just saying, geez, I'm really sorry that you have to not sign the lease because of a couple of signs, but this is what our board is saying, we're a village that prides herself.
And there's an ordinance and we're just trying to.
Right, and we pride ourselves on being a park-like setting and this looks like a flashy sign and it's just like this. And then tell them that maybe we could put a sign out in front with the, the whole thing and you can go to the other tenants and say, we'd like to do this. Would you like to have your name put out there?
Right.
But like Ken said, it's, it's a table, this, this is a big.
You know, you know, I think it's table one here because it looks like, I mean, I can't read it, but it probably is his name and his phone number and all of that, well, there again, where we're located, I don't think someone's gonna pull up to Taylor Avenue, come into the complex and go, whoa, there's a State Farm guy there. That's his phone number, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not nineteen eighty-two.
No, and if we, if we're okay this front one on the building.
Yeah.
On the top.
It's right there.
It's got all the information.
Can't miss it. You don't need this monster.
You're right, you don't.
And that's what it is, it's about the phone number, it's about everything else that's on there, but if he has done a good job as a sales guy, which I think I do an okay job, they're gonna come looking for me. They're gonna know who I am, they're going to, they're like, so they're, they're, gotta be word of mouth at this point of life as an agent.
Okay, so, I'm guessing, I'm hearing you say the one, the two on the building are okay, get rid of the table and give them a decision on the one by the road.
So I'm just looking, maybe because the State Farm agent on thirty-one by, um, up right by Sixteenth Street there.
Yeah.
So I just have a little, just to see what kind of signage they have. And, um, and they have, it's, what they have is, um, it looks like it's, the sign is provided by the building and it has his name and it has another firm on it.
That's pretty big.
It's huge.
But that's all tenants though.
Yes, they have two tenants, right, of the right owners.
This one might be okay, and this side of the road, wait.
Okay, well, I'm just, no, I mean, it's just because.
They have like, they have the State Farm on the building.
Oh, yeah.
I think, yeah, and I think this is, that is, this could also, I don't know for sure, but this could also be, this is the way State Farm wants you to do it. They would like to have this, this and this.
That's what I'm curious.
Like, I, I don't know what they would say, you can only have, you, you're okay if you just have two, like, thinking back to this meeting.
Yeah. I just know, I see that as a hazard.
No, I think State Farm is like, you have, like, that, because, hmm, it might be that State Farm is asking them to have all of this because it's their branding.
But I can't imagine that State Farm hasn't run into municipalities that have rules about their signage.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, it has to be, I, I think, I mean, maybe it's worth them having, you know, a, a discussion. You know, like, I mean, like, to the board, cause then it's not just be like.
I agree.
I think there's, and it just, the, the timing was.
Sure.
His daughters getting married and I was like.
Yeah, yeah, she's still.
Coming, but I was like, I think the board will meet me halfway. I think they'll understand. I think there's.
Oh, yeah, the, the sign.
That was like so dumb.
I think it's.
Okay.
That's.
He doesn't sign the lease, it's seventeen thousand dollars.
I mean, that's.
That's why I.
That's correct.
What was it? Like seventeen thousand that we would lose?
It would be seventeen thousand dollars. And we've not had great luck getting a tenant.
No, we have not had, we've had a daycare, we've had.
That's just in twenty twenty-five. It would be more in twenty twenty-six that we would lose.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I, we would have it, cause we had a tenant until March.
Yeah.
Well. It's February. I think if we get that big table, I think we're gonna hear from the residents and the other tenants. Okay, but we all will be, if he decides not to sign, I am not taking responsibility because I, I just don't, I don't know.
He did wanna paint the door as well.
The doorbell, you ring the doorbell.
And I think that's what they were thinking.
Maybe.
The red. Yeah, he's like, who gave me the door?
No, that's, 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 that's also, he asked him a lot.
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna talk about that. That was not what the discussion was about. It was only about the signage.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. We're not gonna throw that in the mix, cause that was not brought up to me in any sort of meeting. I, all right, I will go back and see and we'll go forward, see what. Okay. He also has to think now, he really wants his office. He doesn't like it downtown. He's got a following. He's got word about when people will see, you know, that he's here and, and then. He, he wants that. Think about that.
What about.
What, what if, my other question is, what if it is a State Farm, what if it is a State Farm requirement?
What, they have the big one out front?
That, I, I'm telling you, it is a franchise.
Cause I just looked at the one out in Sturtevant and he's got one on his road.
Right.
It looks like a house.
The front is tall too. It's pretty big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like, I think it is a requirement. This is the first time we've had a franchise in the village.
Franchises are.
And franchises are different than a personal business.
It is. So maybe that's a good question, cause like you said, to the point, probably normal like that downtown.
And I'm sorry, like, this was not a meeting I needed to be having on Saturday morning at eleven o'clock when I was running around with all the coming and my kids. And I didn't plan on having this meeting, but Randy, Randy literally cornered me at the car show to talk about this and I was like, this is not the time to talk about this. And then Randy couldn't meet any other time this week, cause he was out of town.
Yeah.
Can we say something along the lines of, you're, we're already giving you leniency, but I allow you to put the signs on the building.
The only thing I'm saying is the, the franchise might say, you have to have these three signs.
No, I, I understand.
I don't, it's not his choice.
I understand.
And if it has enemies franchise rule, I, I don't see how we say no because the franchise.
Then we're just saying, no, we don't want a franchise here.
Right. Well, maybe that's the first question to start with is to see, is it a requirement?
And I can't remember. Can you remember?
I looked, so he said he had a cool book that he had nobody.
I'm sure he does. But maybe for choices, maybe not requirements on how many signs.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
I wrote down lots of notes, but it wouldn't surprise me if they have a very strict standard book that they're calling. That would not surprise me in the slightest.
But it sounds like.
They have so many franchises that they would say, here's, here's what you need to have. And I don't think we wanna lose the lease because of here's, you know, cause we're looking back on the State Farm corporation.
Could he go to State Farm and ask for a variance on that? And just say, listen, I work at a community, a municipality, and they have board meetings and this would really. Go against what they're looking for. Could he ask? He, he can. I don't know. It's been hard for him to get an answer just about changing the colors of being white with red rather than red with white. But I can, I can certainly say, I just, part of me feels like we're gonna lose him because we already wanted to sign the lease October first and now we're pushing it off to sign the lease because we don't have an answer on the signs. And I was really hoping to have an answer on the signs, but I still feel like you guys have questions.
Well, he, we have an answer.
It's no.
It's no. That's my opinion. I don't like them.
I mean, just looking at the one downtown and those are looking at a can size.
I cannot approve. I'm trying to tell you, you're all telling me, and we can take a vote, but you're all telling me, these two are fine, this one's not okay. Can you ask him to go back? Then if he can't change them, do I have the approval of everyone to say, go for it then? Like, I'm not hearing that.
Well.
Cohesiveness at all. So.
So I would answer that in the affirmative. Don't, I don't like them. But if it means we're not gonna get the client, then go ahead and we'll do it, follow up later if there is any.
I agree.
Cause you're very.
I don't wanna lose them.
I agree. So we don't wanna lose the tenant, but go back to the table, ask to see if there's anything else we can meet in the middle.
Yeah.
You would like either a smaller sign or get rid of that sign. I don't think there's a smaller option from what he told me. And if we do do a sign on the street, give them the option of the one, but we do have to find pricing for that. Which I feel like might be a little expensive.
Maybe you can change one of the ones on the building to what he's got downtown, because it looks to be a little bit different.
Well, it's, it's like a hanging sign. It's like out in the middle of the street sidewalk. So it's like, and I feel like it might light up, I don't know. Um, okay. So I wanna vote. I would like you to tell me. I need.
I should be friends with.
So. Can you please approve?
No. How do I say this? Who's in favor?
Who, yes, who's in favor of the signage for the, um, prospective tenant to be? Just.
Negotiating. No, we're done.
Yes.
What am I, you're going to.
Um, do you approve the possible sign? I'm gonna ask, can I do this twice?
So you want like one vote to approve the tenant and one vote to. My head hurts.
Like if we, if, this cannot be changed, like going forward, still.
Upon proof, upon proof that the franchise. That. Okay, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming.
If they have proof that they can't really change it, like still.
Yes, franchise deployments are the signs that are given, then approve the, then, then, fine.
Why doesn't he come in and talk to the board? Then we have to. Then we have to push back. The problem is, we are not meeting until November. He wants to sign the lease in like a week and a half.
Let's have a special meeting.
Another special meeting?
Well, we gotta figure this out.
Okay, then we are tabling this discussion until we have another special meeting where he will come in. I, I'm disappointed that we cannot come to agree, because this is, we are throwing money away if we do not approve something here. And I get what you're saying, but I also have been talking about this with Randy's about and the tenant.
So let me ask you a question. So with these three signs, four signs, none of this can be discussed outside of this meeting tonight.
Not as, not with all of this. We have to come together and make a decision.
No, 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 what I'm saying, so when this all started at the car show.
I could talk to Randy about it.
Okay, but you couldn't share any of this information.
Well, Ken had to be saying the table, but I couldn't talk to all of you. Ken, go ahead.
Right.
You, you and Latarius still have the authority to make the decision. Yeah. Based on the ordinance that the board passed a couple of years ago. Correct. So technically, you don't need to vote. You can make an executive decision, but the board just might not be happy with you. Mm-hmm. I just wanna lay that out.
So.
I mean, unless you wanna meet Neil, he's great and I just think this is, this could be literally a twenty-year lease and we are fighting about a sign. And I, I agree that the, but I.
Good enough sign.
I agree. I a hundred percent agree.
Yeah.[1591.38]